Apologize for a little bit of delay, but we've got a bunch of new paperwork that we're looking at for our zoning cases. So I appreciate Jennifer coming and updating us on all that. So thank you for that. We'll go ahead and get started. The first item is Citizen Comments. Shanay, do we have residents?
Yes, we have a few. Citizen Comments provides the opportunity for our citizens to address the council on items that are listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. I will let you know when one minute is left. Please state your name and address prior to your comments. A professional presentation is requested. If you have handouts to provide to the council members, please bring them to me. We have two speakers that said they only want to speak if the council has questions, but I'll go ahead and call y'all up because they're really not able to answer their questions right now. They can just listen to you speak. So the first speaker is Sukie Everett, followed by Sheri Decker. Sukie?
Hi, I'm Sukie, 619 Cimarron Trail. I can't stop thinking about what my husband told me one time about his father. And he said, "When our father spanked us, he wasn't always particular about which end of the belt he used." And when that father, that brutal father, died, no one knew. No one knew that behind closed doors, he had been a monster. And I know that you know that there are monsters behind closed doors in Irving, Texas, right now. But we don't have a shelter for their victims to run to. And some of them are too little to run. They can't even walk right now. But it's going to take big money, really big money. And it's going to take a big effort. But I'm asking that you go ahead and do it anyway, that you vote for it anyway, for such a timeless this. And I'm asking that you remember, that you not forget that someone is out there with a monster behind closed doors, and they are at the wrong end of the belt. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Decker, Sheri Decker, followed by Gretchen Brosh.
Thank you. Sheri Decker, Tarrant County 911. I just signed that in case y'all had any questions for me when my agenda comes up. So I don't have anything. Thank you.
Gretchen Brosh, followed by Chris. I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
We ready? Thank you, David. And I appreciate those of you that are looking when people are speaking, because I know you've got so much to be catching up on, but it means a lot to us because it's scary up here. But my name is Gretchen Brosh. I live at 2804 Laguna Vista Loop, and I've lived here for over 40 something years. I'm here speaking about the recreation that you're planning to raise the fees. And I want you to really think about this. Our recreation department is number one. And if you talk to people in the neighborhoods, if it wasn't for the recreation centers, there'd be absolutely nothing for teens and kids to do. Everything has moved out. All the skating rinks, the golf miniature, everything's gone. So we really need to not increase those fees for the teens and the youth, as well as the seniors, please. We're all on a fixed income. Retired teachers never get raises. So I don't know what I would do physically without our water aerobics classes here. But please consider this. Don't compare us to other cities. We're us. Don't say, "Well, so-and-so's doing more." They have a whole different economic standards there. So please think of that when you go to voting for the increases. We need you. And I appreciate you paying attention and not being on the phone. That's the teacher in me. So thank you.
Finally, Chris. I think it starts with an "N."
Yes, ma'am. A hard name calls attention. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members. I am Pastor Chris of Transgression Church, right across the street from here. And I signed that form because I have a zoning item. And if you would have any questions, I would lovely like to address them. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have, ma'am.
Thank you, Shanay. Next item on our agenda is the City Operations Update. No update? Okay, then we'll go to the review of the agenda. We'll have a public hearing, the first one, on the fiscal year budget. We'll also have a public hearing, number one, on the fiscal year '25-'26 proposed tax rate. Item number four and five will address the minutes from last meeting on Thursday, July 31st. Item number six is providing budget adjustment number six to the fiscal '24-'25 year budget. Item number seven is resolution expressing intent to consider adopting the '25-'26 City of Irving fiscal year budget by September 18th, 2025. Item number eight is resolution approving the amended City of Irving investment policy. Item number nine is authorizing a settlement between Patricia Aguila in the amount of $150,000 for a monster behind closed doors, and they are at the wrong end of the belt. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Decker, Sheri Decker, followed by Gretchen Brosh.
Sheri Decker, Tarrant County 911. I just signed that in case y'all had any questions for me when my agenda comes up, so I don't have anything. Thank you.
Gretchen Brosh, followed by Chris. I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
We ready? Thank you, David, and I appreciate those of you that are looking when people are speaking, because I know you've got so much to be catching up on, but it means a lot to us because it's scary up here. But my name is Gretchen Brosh. I live at 2804 Lago Vista Loop, and have lived here for over forty-something years. I'm here speaking about the recreation that you're planning to raise the fees, and I want you to really think about this. Our recreation department is number one, and if you talk to people in the neighborhoods, if it wasn't for the recreation centers, there'd be absolutely nothing for teens and kids to do. Everything has moved out, all the skating rinks, the golf miniature, everything's gone. So we really need to not increase those fees for the teens and the youth, as well as the seniors, please. We're all on a fixed income. Retired teachers never get raises, so I don't know what I would do physically without our water aerobics classes here. But please consider this, don't compare us to other cities. We're us. Don't say, "Well, so-and-so's doing more." They have a whole different economic standards there, so please think of that when you go to voting for the increases. We need you. And I appreciate you paying attention and not being on the phone. That's the teacher in me, so thank you.
Finally, Chris, I think it starts with an N.
Yes, ma'am. A hard name calls attention. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I am Pastor Chris of Transgression Church, right across the street from here, and I signed that form because I have a zoning item, and if you would have any questions, I would lovely like to address them. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have, Mayor.
Thank you, Shanay. Next item on our agenda is the City Operations Update. No update? Okay, then we'll go to the review of the agenda. We'll have a public hearing, the first one, on the fiscal year budget. We'll also have a public hearing, number one, on the fiscal year 25, 26 proposed tax rate. Item number four and five will address the minutes from last meeting on Thursday, July 31st. Item number six is providing a just, budget adjustment number six to the fiscal 24, 25 year budget. Item number seven is resolution expressing intent to consider adopting the 2025, 2026 City of Irving Fiscal Year Budget by September 18th, 2025. Item number eight is resolution approving the amended City of Irving Investment Policy. Item number nine is authorizing a settlement between Patricia Aguila in the amount of $150,000 for full release and settlement of a personal injury claim. Item number 10 is renewing the agreement with Avant Specialty Benefits, excuse me, LLC in the total estimated amount of $2,750,000 for stop-loss insurance for the City of Irving for insurance carriers and its affiliates or subsidiaries. Item number 11 is approving and adopting the Tarrant County 911 District 2025, 26 Annual Budget. Item number 12 is approving an amended and restated interlocal agreement between the City of Irving and the Irving Independent School District for emergency medical services at football games. Item number 13 is approving an agreement with, for services between the City of Irving, Keep Irving Beautiful, Inc., for the Keep Irving Beautiful Program for the 2025, 2026 in the amount of $72,880. Item number 14 is awarding a contract to XIT Paving and Construction, Inc., in the amount of $560,142 for the Riverside Drive and O'Connor, North O'Connor Boulevard Intersection Improvement Project. Item 15 is awarding a contract to Seagreen Scaping LP in the amount of $440,360 for community development block grant funding for the West Park Basketball Court Replacement Project. Dennis? Joe, are you here? Come on up, Joe, if you would, please.
Yes, sir. It's very similar to, it's the court that we put out at Southwest Park where you can play footsall and basketball on it, and it's in caged, so we're putting a similar unit like that up at West Park. One of the issues out there was the ball, as you know, on that hill would roll off, so this will stop that and also give them the ability to play soccer on it.
What actually is the sport of footsall?
Footsall is a five-on-five soccer. It's a little bit of smaller ball, harder ball. It's usually played inside, so. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Item number 16 is approving a sale contract with Tooltronics, Inc., in the amount of $399,600, and closing cost not to exceed $30,000 for the property located at 802 West Shady Grove Road for the West Irving Creek Channel Improvement Project. Items number 17 and 18, the staff has asked that we pull those till the next meeting. They've got some paperwork, they still want to follow up on those, too. Item number 19 is approving a change order number one to the contract with Seal Freeman, Inc., in the amount of $236,919 for the Center Park Indoor Swimming Facility Project.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just had a quick question. I think this would be to, for Trevor. The Center Park, is that a CMR project? It is? Okay. My understanding of CMR, which is probably imperfect, this is why I have a question, is that, you know, we haven't agreed upon price, and then that's it. So we have an amendment now?
Sure. So, construction manager risk varies, I mean, it's very similar to what you're saying, but this has added work to the contract, so if we, as the owner, are going to add additional work to it, then we have to pay them for that.
Gotcha. That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Item 20 is approving an economic development incentive agreement between the City of Irving and Fox Television Stations, LLC, in the amount not to exceed $390,866, depending upon annual Item 21 is approving a hosting service agreement between New Edge Services, LLC, in the total amount of $180,900 for City Works and GIS Systems Cloud Hosting.
I had a question on number 20, maybe Phillip? For the agreement for Fox, it looks like we hold that for 15 years?
Brian, could you come up and answer the question? It is a 15-year term that the performance obligation is.
Yes, we had an existing agreement with them for 10 years, but by approving this, they added on an additional five years, so that way they have to maintain and occupy that facility for 15 years.
No interest, we hold the same amount of money in 15 years from now?
If they default on the terms, the interest would accrue on the grant, and they would have to pay back the grant with interest.
Okay.
At any time during that 15-year period.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay. 22, approving and accepting the bid for Carney Companies, Inc., in the amount of $44,237,770 for construction of Area 4 at the Princeton Pump Station. You all get to see what that's all about when you go on the tour. Number 23 is approving an agreement with Fannin County Electric Cooperative in the estimated amount of $1,260,871.52, improve the Fannin County, Fannin's Electric Facility to service, the Princeton Booster Pump Station Expansion Project. Item number 24 is approving an engineering service agreement with Neil Schaefer, Inc., in the estimated amount of $378,880 for the Beltline Elevated Storage Tank Rehab, Rehabilitation Design. Number 25 is supporting an application for the municipal setting designation and filing of a restricted covenants by the City of Dallas for the property at 5051 Mexican Road in Dallas, Texas. We had that earlier, we talked about. We have the bids, which are items 26 through 22. Any questions on the bids? Okay. 33 is authorizing the abandonment and vacationing of a 10-foot sanitary sewer easement along a portion of property located at 1501 Valley View Lane, tract of land in the Chilton Smith Survey Abstract Number 1293, and being in north line of Lot 1R Block A, Valley Wood Edition Owner RG Valley View LLC. Number 34 is authorizing a partial abandonment and vacationing of a 10-foot utility easement along a portion of property located at 949 Edgemont Drive, part of the McKinney &amp; Williams Survey Abstract Number 1059, and being a portion of lots 19X Block C, Aspen Square Townhome amended owner by Aspen Square Homes LLC. 35 is granting a franchise to Community Waste Disposal, LP, for solid waste collection services beginning on September 1st, 2025, and ending on August 31st, 2028 pursuant to Chapter 33 of the Civil, of the Code of Civil and Criminal Ordinances of the City of Irving, Texas. Item number 36 is granting a franchise to Renegade Rolloff and Holling for solid waste collection services beginning on August 28th, 2025, and ending on August 27th, 2028 pursuant to Chapter 33 of the Code of Civil and Criminal Ordinances of the City of Irving, Texas. Number 37 is first reading, approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos Cities Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corporation Mid-Tex Division regarding the company's 2025 Rate Review filing. 38? Yes, sir.
You know, I think it's 37 and number six down there. There's another 9.27% increase on average residential rates that are getting passed through to us through a provider we can't do anything about, you know, and this goes back to the point of when we're talking to the state and looking at things, these are numbers that we can't control. We went and fought them, and now we're at, average house is going to have 9.27% increase annually on their gas rates. I just wanted to bring this up to the council to make sure that these are the things we're seeing from things we can't control.
David, I think that makes a good point. It'd be interesting to kind of keep track of this year, what those things cost, you know, I mean, that's a nine, not over 9% increase that every family's going to pay on their gas. And, and there's other things we've seen that we've had to raise the rates on as well based on the different utility providers across the city, so it'd be, when, when you see the state try to limit us at 1%, and you see the utility companies and everybody else at 8, 9, and 10%, it makes it a little difficult for, for me to understand how they can go up 9% when they expect us to only go up 1% to 2%. Al?
Yeah. When you, you're talking to them, aren't you? Don Corr and the rest of them. When I look at the negotiated settlement between Atmos Cities Steering and Atmos Energy Corporation, are they affiliated? What's the deal there, do you know?
I can speak into it.
Okay.
Yep. You're welcome. The city is one of 181 cities that are part of a coalition, and so, as Councilmember, Councilmember Pfaff noted, I mean, this is now governed by kind of a state framework. There is a rate mechanism, it's essentially the process that is put in place, and so you all suspended these rates, and then you authorized this coalition. It is represented by lawyers and consultants to negotiate with Atmos to come to this settlement. So this is kind of the culmination of all of that effort. These rates are rates that would apply to residents and businesses here in Irving, Texas.
Yeah, thank you, Carol. So am I assuming that Atmos Cities Steering Committee is that coalition?
That is that coalition, and we are a member of that coalition.
Okay. Can we get a list of who else is part of that?
Yes, sir, you can. I will provide that. Yep.
Okay. Number 38 is amending Chapter 22 entitled Noise of the Code of Civil and Criminal Ordinances of the City of Irving, Texas to amend definitions and standards to ensure consistency with the state law. This is another one that, you know, over the last few years, we've been asked to reduce the noise in the neighborhood, and so we lowered it to a lower decimal. Unfortunately, the state doesn't agree with it, so we have to raise the decimal level in the neighborhoods based upon the state's requiring us to do so because we can't overrule them. So, again, a lot of these prices and a lot of these things, we don't have any control over, they're controlled by the state, so unfortunately, or fortunately, if you look at it from their perspective. Item number 39 is an ordinance amending Chapter 41 entitled Water and Sewer Systems of the Code of the Civil and Criminal Ordinances of the City of Irving, Texas by adding adequate water and wastewater infrastructure capacity review and modifications to cross-connection control regulating general sanitary sewer use regulations, liquid waste transportation and management and enforcement. Item number 40 is considering amendment to the City of Irving's Land Development Code, number one, development standards and building codes to add Chapter 51 Stormwater Management and Drainage, providing a servability clause, a saving clause, and a penalty clause, and an effective date. Item number 41 is considering an amendment to the City of Irving's Land Development Code, Part One, Development Standards and Building Codes, to add Chapter 53 Adequate Public Facilities, providing a servability clause, a saving clause, a penalty, and an effective date. Item number 42 is a public hearing and ordinance expanding the boundaries of tax increment reinvestment zone number one, City of Irving, Texas, for tax increment financing purposes pursuant to Chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code, containing findings and providing relatively related, and provisions related to the foregone subject and providing a servability clause. Item number 43 is considering, is an ordinance, consider the tax increment reinvestment zone one-fourth amending project plan and financing plan. Item number 44 is a public hearing and first reading of solid waste fees, amending Chapter 33 entitled Refuse Garbage and Weeds, Section 33 through 33, and 33 through 34 of the Code of the Civil and Criminal Ordinances of the City of Irving, Texas, providing for new solid waste service rates and fees. Item number 45 is a public hearing and first reading of the ordinance amending Section 41 through 57 of Article 9 entitled Municipal Drainage Utility Systems of Chapter 41 entitled Water and Sewer Systems of the Code of Civil and Criminal Ordinances of the City of Irving, Texas, setting a new schedule of drainage charges, providing for penalties, providing for servability clause, and providing an effective date. Item number 46 is a public hearing and first reading, amending Chapter 52 entitled Water and Service Rates of the Code of Civil and Criminal Ordinances of the City of Irving, Texas, providing for new monthly water and sewer rates. And that brings us to our zoning cases. Good afternoon, Joslyn.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Are you ready for a long discussion?
Get comfortable, get comfortable. So, all right, yes, we do have several cases tonight. Joslyn Murphy, Director of Planning. Let me bring up that PowerPoint, please, thank you. 4761. All right, thank you. All right, our first case is item 47, it's an alcohol distance variance at 105 South Main Street. The variance is to the required 300-foot separation between a church and a, an operation that sells alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption, and they're requesting 100-foot variance. You have two letters of support and one in opposition. You have a memo with that additional opposition and also a minor correction on the report. So here we are at Irving and Main Street. This is the De Rosini's Pizza, and they recently did get an, or, sorry, they recently did get an RAB just a couple months ago, and the building over here is being rented out to a church. And so we realized that, and the applicant has had to proceed with this variance request. Because of the way it is measured, this is approximately 200 feet, and that is within the 300-foot minimum. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Dennis?
So there's currently a church in that location now?
Yeah, from what I understand, they rent month-to-month, but they are operating, there is a CO for the church.
Because I know there used to be a church there that moved, so there's another church that's coming behind them.
When we were working the RAB case, we were communicating with the owner, and we understood that it was a, it was a current lease. It was a month-to-month lease, but it was a current lease.
I talked to, I talked to Yarborough about it, because I said, "Are you really renting it out?" And he goes, "Yeah, I am."
Yeah, it's been there.
Yeah. It isn't there anymore. It's a biker group.
No, no. It's Solid Rock.
Oh, the Solid Rock, okay. Oh, is it, the biker was before the Solid Rock.
Justin, what was the P&amp;Z vote on that?
P&amp;Z does not vote on alcohol distance variances, those go straight to council.
You had a, maybe I missed it.
They have public comment forms.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, the, okay, 7-0 denial?
I think that's the next one.
Yeah, not for, not for alcohol distance, only council sees alcohol distance.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, on to the next one.
All right, this is a case that was postponed and is, has, is being brought back to you, and it's 2912 North MacArthur. The requesting go from PO, Professional Office, to, they, so they're requesting, the next case is a conditional use permit for event centers. In order to ask for the event center, they had to rezone to a district that allows them to even ask for the event center. You cannot do that in the PO, so this first case is a variance to, I'm sorry, a rezoning to CN in order to ask for it. They're excluding alcohol sales because of the acknowledged concerns about parking. Staff did recommend denial, P&amp;Z was denial 7 to 0. So you have letters, seven letters of support we recently got yesterday, I believe, those are from renters in the adjacent multifamily to the east. I believe. Those are from renters in the adjacent multifamily to the east. And we do not have any in opposition. So here's the location of the property. It is currently an office building. I believe there's some insurance offices in there, and those, there's two spaces in here that are vacant. They're wanting to use as event centers. And this is the site plan for the SP case. Again, removing the gasoline service station as an allowed use. They are, as part of the, both the rezoning and the CUP, proposing to add some spaces here in the rear. We also got a letter from the owner here to the south, again, both for the rezoning and the CUP, to, that he would allow them to use his, I'm going to go back to the aerial for a second, to use the property in the rear for parking. But you have to have excess parking in order to be able to share parking. And from what we could tell, we haven't, this was so quick, we didn't have a chance to look in detail, but they, they have enough for themselves and not enough to share. So this, again, is the property, a couple insurance companies currently. I don't believe this is going to be one of the event centers, and so this is not the current tenant. And this was found that they had begun operating the event center without the CL and without the conditional use permit. So these are some pictures that were taken by inspections. And this is the adjacent property to the north. Across the street is single-family residential, which is one of the major basis of our opposition. We're concerned about overflow parking into the residential area. Any questions on that case?
Questions? Al?
Yeah, no, I have to tell you, I've been out there and visited the site and talked to the gentleman, and I think he's here. It very clear that the 7-0 denial vote was correct. But more importantly, that's the MacArthur corridor that's all commercial. And one of the concerns that I have is that we've put a lot of money in the hole from approximately Pioneer all the way up to Rochelle. A lot of construction on the roads to get them up. So that's going to be, hopefully, a vibrant commercial in the future. But to do this kind of a facility is really not fulfilling what I think is the potential of MacArthur. So, thank you.
Any other questions? We'll move on to the next one.
All right. The next one is the conditional use permit request in this property. They have to do a conditional use permit because the event centers will be located within 500 feet of an R residential district, and one of the, and one of the event centers is over 2,000 square feet, and then they also need a variance to the parking. Again, staff recommendation was approval. P&amp;Z was deny, I'm sorry, denial. P&amp;Z was denial 7-0. And again, you have your letters of support and none in opposition. So this map shows on the north and south ends of the building where those event centers are being requested. And here's the site plan for the case. Again, we have the multifamily to the east. We have the single family to the west, and those were some of the triggers for the conditional use permit. They are also required to have 69 spaces for the building, including the event center and the offices. They're able to provide 58 spaces, and that's after constructing additional spaces. And so they're asking for a variance. There are certain criteria that the council can approve a conditional use permit under. I won't read those, but there are criteria in the ordinance. Staff does find that it's not compatible with the existing uses, and it could cause a negative impact on the residential uses. And council does have the option of adding certain conditions under the conditional use permit, including time limits, parking, landscaping, and those types of things. And again, here's a picture of the property on the north and south ends, some of the same interior pictures. I'll be happy to answer any more questions.
Questions?
Mark?
The, the ordinance that we just talked about with the delivery in the middle of the night, would that affect this property too?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks. So it mean that the state is really kind of forcing decisions like this?
It takes our control away, yes.
John?
Thank you, Mayor. Joslyn, does the proposal for the CUP currently include a time limit?
It, they are proposing operating hours. Well, they're saying the operating hours restricted to 5:30 to 12:00, Monday through Friday, and then 9:00 to 12:00 Saturday and Sunday. You can...
Sorry, I meant, I meant the CUP itself.
Yes, this is a CUP.
No, no, I mean, like, it's good for a certain amount of time.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, they have not proposed one, and we didn't recommend one because we recommend denial. So if you wanted to propose it, you could set a time, and they didn't propose a time, no.
Okay.
Normally, if we were recommending approval, we would have set a time, but since we recommend denial, we didn't.
Okay. Thank you.
Adam?
Yeah, thank you. I'm looking at this drawing here. Is the number of parking spots calculated on the square footage? Is that the basis of the calculation of the event center?
Yes. So they calculated the offices that are remaining, and the, the 100 to 300 for the offices, and then the, the event centers, the square footage of those are one space to 100 square feet. So you just add all of those up. So the whole building would be 58 spaces.
So even though the, the section of this building isn't, the section for the event center proper versus the offices, even though that's not delineated in this drawing, the calculation was taken into...
Absolutely.
...account. Okay.
Yeah, because it's the entire property that's accommodating, because they're not delineated by use. And that they're saying, one reason they put their hours in here, because they're, they're, and they'll probably explain tonight how they're saying that they will operate more at night where the offices are during the day, and that's your prerogative, whether you want to accept that or not.
Sorry, can you, please say it one more time?
If the offices are operating during the day, and they theoretically leave at 5:00, and the event center is at night or on the weekends, they're saying that there would, they would not cross times. They would not be double-using those parking spaces.
Right.
So that, that is the basis of their claim as to why the variance is okay.
So if, for the sake of argument, the event center is only 2/3 of the footprint of that building, that, that doesn't affect the, the calculated number of spaces required?
It's, well, we, we do the total. We have a chart, and it's like, you know, number, the square footage of office, and the ratio is this many spaces. The event center's this many, and that's the total, and that's just the way it is.
Okay.
Whether the office spaces are vacant or not, it's still, they're still calculated.
Okay. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, a follow-up question. So the, the hours, excuse me, the hours of operation listed here, is that in the CUP, and can we hold them to that?
It is in the CUP. We've got it up here. The most difficult part of any hours, which the CUP does allow for hours, is just enforcement.
Okay. But it is something that's enforceable?
It is enforceable. It's just, it'd have to be done by PD.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, on to the next one.
All right. The next case is 323 Collins Drive. It's an R6 requesting an SP for an accessory dwelling unit. Staff recommended approval. P&amp;Z, I'm sorry, denial. P&amp;Z was denial 8 to 0. No forms of support or opposition. So here we are, Collins Street, north of Fifth Street. And this, I believe, has been constructed in the rear, and the accessory dwelling unit intends to be fully operational with the kitchen, bathrooms, bedrooms, and HVAC. So the request is a rezoning to add the ability to keep the accessory dwelling unit. So this is a property, they happened to do some work on the property. I'll just picture the dwelling unit in the back, the surrounding properties. So these are, code did, this is how we found out about it. This code did have a complaint, so a code asked, and the owner did allow them to go back and take pictures. And so these are the pictures that code compliance was able to get. So you do see the full kitchen. You do see the bathrooms and the bedrooms.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Bullet point 12, if you could read that. City Council considered adopting ADU standards in spring 2024, but decided not to proceed with considering such regulations.
Correct.
You know, I think Adam and I are new, new here, and maybe give us a little update on where we stand. And my other question is, what, what happens when you don't deny it? Do they have to tear down the structure that's already built, or what's the, what's the next step on this?
So we had around four, early, next, last spring, we had about four ADUs. And so we put those on hold, and council directed us to look, you know, go through and do some proposed amendments if we were going to allow ADUs by right. So we had put some standards together about what those would be, how big they could be in proportion to the lot, that type of thing. When it came to it, it was chosen not to proceed with those. So to answer your second question, if somebody does, has built one and gets denied, most often, they convert it into a storage building, and just have it be an unhappable accessory building in the rear.
The challenge we, we ran into as we started to look at this is, where, if you build another house, where do they park? And that's, and this neighborhood's a prime example. John and I were just talking about it. You can barely get down the streets because they're so jammed in there. And so if you add another family, and they're going to add another two to, two to four cars, where do, where do they go? That was one of our big considerations, along with a few other things.
No others.
But for, for me, that was the parking, because we, we've got some of those areas in the narrow streets down there that, once they get parked in there, you can't get a fire truck down without, or an ambulance, without kind of taking the side out of everything. Any other questions? Next one.
This one is our second ADU of the day, 908 Sunset, R6, an SP for an ADU with a variance, variances to the minimum rear and side yard setbacks. Staff again recommend denial. P&amp;Z denial 8 to 0. No letters of support to, and opposition. So here is property on Sunset, just east of North MacArthur. So this is just across the way over here from City Hall. This is a long, deep lot. This structure in the rear is the ADU. I believe it was an existing storage building that they converted, and then it does not meet the setbacks in any type of accessory structure. So there's where the opposition is. So here is the site plan. Part of the discussion, early on, we've had this case for a few months, and we're working with their fire access. Because it's such a deep lot, it has to be within, within 150 feet of the right-of-way, and they have to be able to get a fire truck back. So they were willing to put in a fire lane that could be accessible for fire services. But here in the rear, it would be accessory dwelling unit, and then they're needing variances to the six-foot setback for an 11-foot tall building. So four and a half feet in the rear and four feet on the side. And here's a picture of this existing structure. And here's the structure in consideration, and some of the surrounding properties. And again, here's the code. I also visited this one as well. And it is fully constructed, full kitchen, cooking facilities, bathroom, bedrooms. I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Is that unit exist on the back?
Yes.
So they already built it?
Yes, that's, that's what these, I believe, if I'm correct, they've been renting it out as well.
So this also be built without a permit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Next one.
All right. 1405 Lake Shore. This is another R6 SP to allow a second kitchen inside a primary residence. So this is attached. It's an extension to the existing house. Staff finds no undue hardship. P&amp;Z recommend approval of 5 to 3, while under support and none in opposition. Again, here it is on Lake Shore Drive. And it's an existing two-story home. They, actually, they have proposed house addition. They have completed the addition. They just completed it without the cooking facilities. So it's a, right now, it's a mother-in-law suite, and I've got some pictures here in a second of what they provided us. But it has been constructed. If this is approved to allow for the second kitchen, which essentially is cooking facilities, then they will go back and install those cooking facilities. And so here is the pictured bedroom, bathroom, kitchen, directly attached to the family room. There is an exterior doorway onto the back patio. They're not providing any additional parking for this. Again, it's just an extension of the house, but having a full kitchen is what triggered the zoning case. So this is just a graphic, but this is what they provided us, and in the home and surrounding. You happy to answer any questions?
Yeah. We were at the, at the P&amp;Z for this meeting and heard the discussion, and the, it's a, a lot of times with ADUs too, you would hear these cases, and there's good family reasons for what somebody wants to do. But then, this change goes with the property into the future. And so, obviously, the ordinance exists to protect the neighborhood as single-family homes, not, so they're not, they're not duplexes or what, or what have you. And so by allowing this, you, you kind of set that in place for this property in the future. So I agreed with the minority vote on the, with the P&amp;Z on this one.
Yeah, I remember the case we had probably about a year and a half ago. And they, I think, came back and decided to just extend the house, which here we got the same thing, which if anybody got a crystal ball can figure out, this is going to be the answer to the ADU issue in our city. Because people are just going to start adding on to their house a second dwelling unit. But as long as it's attached, it's okay. So we really need to start figuring out, you know, what's going to be our response to these, because that's how you get around the ADU issue. You know, I mean, that's, that's two separate units, but they're just, they've attached them. So that's just something we need to think about. Because I kind of predicted this when we had that other case, that this is what people are going to start doing.
Other questions or comments? Okay, on to the next one.
All right. The next case, the 201 East Pioneer. They were requesting a rezoning to CC Community Commercial. The applicant has requested an indefinite postponement of this case. You should have it by memo as part of your packet. And so we were, we will go back, get back with the applicant to see what their options are, and bring it back to you when they're ready.
That's an indefinite postponement?
Yes, sir. Next case, 2323 Cheyenne. This is item 54. This is the Catholic Church, and they are zoned SP R6, but they're requesting a variance for the side and rear setbacks for an accessory storage building. This is where they're keeping some of their food pantry products. Staff finds no unnecessary hardship. P&amp;Z recommended approval 8 to 0. You have three letters of support and none in opposition. Here we are, we are at Rainier Street and Esters, and it's the Holy Family of Nazareth School. I was talking too fast. The site plan here shows the building here in the far southeast corner, and they are wanting to put it here so they don't intake up any of their parking. So, because we said, well, you've got a huge property, why don't you just move it a little bit? And it would have taken away a few parking spaces, so they wanted to go ahead and request the variance. So it's, they were supposed to have 25 feet, R6, sorry, the site plan requires 25 feet, and they're proposing 10 feet. And it's just going to be a basic storage structure. Looks like they'll have some habitable areas and some refrigerators.
What's that back up against? Is that the parking lot for the hotel?
Yeah, it looks like. I can go back to the aerial. Yeah, you have La Quinta down here. So the majority of it's up against the hotel property.
Okay. Next one.
Next, good.
You're out of roll.
31, we're trying. 3131 North O'Connor. This is the old Sloan School, or the existing Sloan School. It's currently zoned SP2 for R7-5 for the daycare and private school, rezoning to SP2 R6 for a single-family development. They had proposed to the P&amp;Z variances to the minimum lot depth and width. Now they are just requesting a variance to the lot depth. So there, he has officially changed his request, since that's what's being proposed to council. So it's only for lot depth. Staff recommended approval. P&amp;Z recommended approval with that variance only to lot depth by a vote of 7 to 1. No letters of support and 2 in opposition. by a vote of seven to one, no letters of support and two in opposition. And here we are in Sloan School and MacArthur. I'm sorry, O'Connor. These are the locations of the opposition that we've received. So, the proposal that went to P&amp;Z had 14 lots. This removes two lots. So, the only request they are doing other than the zoning from R7-5 to R6, and the properties around, by the way, are currently R6, so they're consistent with the rezoning of the area. Because of the size of the lot and the required size of the street, which is 52-foot right-of-way, they're just needing two feet in lot depth, but the lot area will meet the minimum 6,000 square foot required in R6. So, only these northern five lots are requesting the lot depth variance.
So, are they taking the school down? Is that what's happening?
Yes. And then, so there's...
The backside there, are they going to the alley? Is that where...
Over here. This is Farine.
No, no, the other...
Oh, the alley, mhm.
Can they put rear alley in there, or what are they doing?
These, I believe, will all be front-loaded. The alley serves, of course, the lots here up on Merle. I don't believe their intention is to access off the alley.
John, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the cul-de-sac at the end, I think, it's a little fuzzy in our packet, but I think it says radius 48, so that's a 96-foot?
Yes.
So, that's, that's what the new standard is, right? Okay, thank you.
So, you got, how many homes coming out of one driveway?
There'll be 12 in this subdivision.
All feeding just through one place on MacArthur, right?
Yes, yes.
O'Connor.
O'Connor.
Any questions?
All right.
I thought that's what it was, but it wasn't registering for something.
Next case, item 56, is 1230 East Airport Freeway. It's CC Community Commercial, and they are just requesting a variance to the minimum landscape and parking buffers. This is a complete rebuild of a convenience store and gas station. Staff finds no unnecessary hardship. P&amp;Z recommended approval eight to zero, no letters of opposition or support. So, it's this property at Carl Road and 183. They have been affected by the expansion of 183, so they have lost some of their frontage through that project. And so, of course, with the existing development, they didn't have to change anything, but since they're taking everything down and rebuilding, that triggers all the current standards. So, they do have a 30-foot required buffer on the 183 with a 183 overlay, and they have 15 feet required on Carl. So, they're required, where they're asking for a variable buffer along 183 instead of the 30-foot, and then a seven and a half to 15 variable on Carl Road. So, just trying to fit a lot onto the property. There is, there will be a convenience store and then a small restaurant attached to it. And just some pictures of the area. I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Questions? Okay.
Could you just help me understand the 183 side of it? There's a requirement now that they have a 30-foot buffer between, I guess, the parking lot and the access road? Well, anyhow, is that supposed to all be landscaping?
Yes, supposed to be landscape buffer. When 183 was being redeveloped, the city sought as an opportunity to make it better and, you know, less, less busy, I guess, since that was part of it, is just to add and require a lot of landscaping. That, let's just say, there's been a lot of variances given for that. And so, it probably hasn't turned out quite like was intended, but that's what the 30-foot buffer was there for, is just to try to absorb some of the activity onto the highway.
And if, if they were required to meet the 30-foot buffer, would that put any undue, I guess, stress or anything on the traffic patterns of those gas pumps or anything like that? Are there other logistical conflicts?
Yeah, they'd have to, I don't believe they can have the driveways. They definitely can't have the parking in any of the landscape buffer areas. So, yeah, it would tighten their entire site down.
So, they, oh, they would lose that driveway access off the, okay.
Yeah, they could, they could cut through here, but I don't believe they can have that.
Okay. Thank you.
Next one.
Next one. So, the next two cases, the applicant has requested to withdraw these cases. These are on 1420 Greenway. These were going to be for manufacturing use. So, these two cases have been withdrawn.
57 and 58 withdrawn?
Yes. Item 59 is, 59 and 60 are companion cases, 1101 West Royal. These are cases that you saw a few months ago that they brought back. And they, the first one is a comprehensive plan, future land use amendment from business office to community village. Staff recommends approval, P&amp;Z recommended approval seven to one, and you have 14 letters of support and none in opposition. So, this property is here at Royal and 161. It is just north, it's just surrounded by some office buildings, the hotel here, and of course, 161, and then the Fox is just down West Royal Lane, the new Fox site. It is zoned for business office currently. It is a vacant lot. Business office is, of course, intended to be the taller offices, whereas community village is a low-intensity mixed-use future land use. And there's certain criteria to change the future land use map from a non-residential to a primarily residential use, which a mixed-use generally is. And not going into detail, we do find that this is acceptable. And I can stop there, or I can go on to the zoning case if you'd like.
Al?
Justin, this is one we had maybe four months ago, five months ago, first time. And then, they came back around because the original was, they were going to have just a smaller restaurant up kind of in the, along the water area. I should say the Decatur Canal area, but the other part was, they came back a second time, and they then moved all the quote-unquote condos slash townhomes all the way back into, like a horseshoe in the back. And then, the, I think of an Amas bacon, the Ice House group had their restaurant. Now, I understand they've come back, and that's what we're going to be talking about. But I, talk to me at the height and the location of the apartments, the multifamily, as opposed to the, kind of walking village, I think they call it.
So, that'll be in the next case. Let me get to that in a couple of slides.
Okay, well, then I'll wait. Okay?
All right. So, again, the next case is someone going from freeway and the 161 overlay, what they're requesting an SP2. So, in the 161 overlay, the mixed-use isn't allowed use. So, this exercise is just establishing those standards for development because we don't have low-intensity mixed-use standards. So, it's not particularly a use request as much as just setting those development standards. Staff recommended approval, P&amp;Z approval seven to one, again, 14 letters of support and none in opposition. So, the original request, I'm going to go to the pictures for a second. The original request was for four stories, and then it, here's the Kirby Ice House. This is the, out of Houston, they have four in Houston. Be indoor and outdoor. I think the total square footage is about 25,000 square feet, so it's a pretty good size. And that would be connected to and part of the mixed-use development with the, there'll be commercial on the bottom here and live work, be a fitness center, and then, of course, the upper floors would be multifamily. So, the original request was that they will meet the 10% of the mixed-use in the 161 overlay. The proposed density would be 37 units an acre. In the last couple of days, we've been talking with them, and I believe they've been working with some of the city council members. And they're proposing to have seven stories on the property. So, it's a southern building, the east side of the southern building, and they're specifically listing the amenities that they are adding. So, those, we provided you a memo today of those amenities that they're putting in. So, here are the amenities. They're adding a dog wash station, a dog park, granite, granite or quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances, pavers on the mixed-use plaza, a washer and dryer in every unit, and bicycle parking. So, they can do those themselves, but through the site plan, they're committing to those, they're tied to those. They're also providing, again, here's the seven stories. The first two stories are here, at least in the picture, you can kind of see in the glass, and then five stories above. And so, here's the original five-story, and here's the seven-story, again, two on the bottom and five on the top. And this would push, it's kind of blurry here, but they would have some of the one-story units, and some of the first floor units might have a 20-foot height, so they may use that whole thing for a retail or something, or other areas might use that as two floors. They're counting that as two. So, I'm going to stop there, and they will get into more detail in terms of what their request is. We are providing both of those to y'all today because it was a last-minute request, and we want to make sure they have the opportunity tonight to explain those both to you so that you're able to decide which one you prefer, if any.
Could you flip up the site plan map that you had there?
This one?
Yeah, right there. So, now they're moving the parking to the front along Royal?
So, that was always there. So, let me go back to this original. Well, I thought I had one in here. So, the, all they've done is increase this here. So, I think you were referring to townhouses a minute ago. Those, go back?
There was one way back. But that's okay, let's deal with the one that's right there now.
Because the, they've only processed, the first case that came through, I believe, was in May. The townhouses that you discussed, they were just kicking that around. That was never a formal proposal that went through the process.
Okay. So, the last one I thought we saw, because this is the latest one that we're going to see, right? Had the up, the upper-left quadrant was going to be horseshoe apartments. I call it horseshoe.
There, the footprint of this hasn't particularly changed. What's changed is adding the seven stories versus the five levels on this area here in red. So, they indicated to me, when they're providing me this information, that the general footprint, the parking garage, and the way the multifamily is laid out hasn't changed in itself, they're just adding floors to the southern, southern building.
So, they've changed now, now to seven, when in fact, we're looking at eight floors based on what we're dealing with, with 840. So, number one. Number two is along the 161 corridor. That still doesn't get it as far as height, but the other part was, I thought we also had a traffic pattern problem coming out of there, because when you look at the 161 corridor, those are all office buildings, going up from Microsoft all the way down to the 114 Axis Road, the Nokia, the old Nokia building. And then, you go to the right of what we're looking at, which is the MacArthur quadrant, and that's all commercial. And then, so what I'm trying to get a sense is how they, how are they looking to then both access on traffic and number one? Number two is the height now that they're talking about, and that now they've gone to all multifamily. Am I correct?
No, it's still going to be mixed-use. There'll still be, they'll meet the 10% commercial. So, with the Kirby Road Ice House and then the liner buildings essentially, the retail and the live work, they're still going to meet their 10% commercial. They're just adding more residential units and more height in this building.
That's what I'm talking to, the residential, not the other. So, but it's all multifamily now. It's all, let me just, it's all apartments in that quadrant?
Then, well, except for the first level. So, all the, all the new stuff will be multi, will be multifamily. The new, the two new levels will be multifamily, but the commercial, the mixed-use part of it is still going to stay the same.
So, they're going to do the bottom of the apartments. That's going to be commercial?
Yes, on these two sides.
Plus, the other part where the...
The restaurant.
Okay, or coming in? Yeah, okay. It's still from a traffic, it's crazy, coming up on Royal anyway. But I'm more concerned on the height that the 161 actually presents for the, and I guess I would have felt a lot, I guess I'm more comfortable if they would have put that along 161, because now what they're doing, I don't know what, what's that middle blank area?
So, and that's what I was going to comment. So, the intention, they're purposely focusing on this, so they have kind of a central, you know, walkway, a, it's a private driveway, so they can close it and they can have events if they want to, farmer's market. So, they're purposely orienting both the mixed-use and the restaurant into this, this interior driveway. And they're going to amenitize it with, you know, landscaping and trees and that type of thing. So, it's purposely not oriented to 161 because it's intended to be walkable.
And how many units?
It is, goodness, they were 37, well, 364, and they increased, I think it was to four. I have, y'all have a memo I gave you today, I didn't have it with me. They're increasing it to be 416-ish, but they're adding some units because they're, I think they're adding 90 more units because of the additional two floors.
That's a lot of cars.
Yeah, the, to answer your original question, the traffic will go out onto Royal.
Any place it can go.
Yeah, right, because you can't get onto 161. So, Royal has the capacity, and they'll just have to work with traffic in terms of access. Go back to that.
It doesn't fit.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
Yeah, there's a lot going on with this, with this case. It's not the easiest case. This parcel's been undeveloped for a long period of time, and then, we know that the Piedmont owners of the office building have wanted to do something with this for quite a while and looking for an amenity for their tenants. So, there's, there's that component to it. As Al mentioned, there's, you know, we're looking at changing our ordinance to have certain height restrictions for, for multifamily and for, for mixed-use. And that goes to our desire to have better quality construction. And I believe here, so there's two apartment buildings, they're talking about going to seven stories for the south, but even then, they're not talking about steel construction for that, are they?
They'll have to answer what their intention is with that, yeah.
I don't, we don't have specific construction plans regarding the construction type. I think Wayne, I asked him to come up here, can talk about generally what the rules are in the relationship between material type and height.
Okay.
Because it depends, right, Wayne?
You took, you took the words right out of my mouth, Philip. Thank you. Good afternoon, Wayne Snell, Director of Inspections. And as Philip mentions, there are a lot of variables that go into construction. I believe, I haven't, I haven't seen the plans myself, but I believe this is probably a podium-style construction on the first floor with your standard, what they call type-three construction above that, which is probably the other five stories. Now, that's all based on assumption, what, seeing how these things usually get built. So, there's a combination of some concrete and steel on the first couple of floors, and then the remainder is going to be your conventional type of construction that you normally see apartments built. And these are all assumptions, because again, I haven't specifically seen those plans, but that's probably what we're looking at. And we'll get deeper into it on the next item.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, so we're obviously interested in the, in the steel construction for the better quality, and we've, we've passed some cases involving for that with the Ritz condos and with O'Connor Ridge, and those are very positive developments, I would say. I think, I think the council would, would agree with that. And I've met with the developer a couple of times, and they've been responsive, responsive. They have increased the height, but they're not going to steal, and it's just even, and it's just for the one building. I know that there's a concern that if they, by adding more units, then that causes them to fall below the 10% requirement for the commercial on the ground floors, and there's some concern about that. And there's some concern about that. But I think where we are as a council is, we want the higher, better quality construction. And if one has to give way, I would think that we'd be more accommodating for the 10%. And then going forward, I think the commercial component for mixed use is going to be higher than 10%, but that's, you know, going forward. They did be, they were responsive as far as like having a promenade around the building and a dog park, and so, and they want to do high-quality construction. I know that there's a concern that they have by adding more units to how that impacts the parking. Maybe that actually causes them not to have enough parking for the Ice House. Can you speak to that, Jocelyn? Is that your understanding too, is that there would not be enough parking in the parking garage if they went higher for those residential buildings? And then they would then have to like start counting the open-air lot spaces again from the Ice House?
So Kirby Ice House is very particular. They have their adequate parking. They have their parking visible. So when their customers come, that was one of the first conversations several months ago that we had with them, that Kirby was very specific about their parking allowance. So the applicant is not going to change the parking ratio, so they will do whatever they need to do, add another level in the parking garage, but they will meet their parking ratio as required for that building specifically. So the intention is not to push into Kirby, and I don't think Kirby would accept that, because that parking is very much part of their model.
Okay. So it looks to me like, as far as like the multifamily, that, you know, we would likely want to stay with where we've been going, which is the higher buildings with the steel construction, the better quality. And then, and as Al pointed out too, this is a difficult parcel, because like you come north on 161, and you have to exit before you get to 114, and that intersection there is very congested. And even if you're talking about people coming in after hours to go to the Ice House, that's just a very congested intersection. The flyover's not finished going westbound on 114 to go to 161 or anywhere else. And that really, I would really like to see those happen. Great to see the U-turn completed at 6:35 on Belt Line, but there's other things that need to be done to alleviate some of these bad intersections, and this is one of them. So anyways, so I think that this is a difficult case. I'm glad to see, you know, the developer has started to be responsive, but it doesn't appear that they're getting there with what's being proposed.
Dennis, did you?
Well, I just want to ask a question concerning what happens Monday with Senate Bill 840.
Good, good question.
How does that affect, say, for instance, you know, I don't want to say if this case is voted down, whatever, but my question, my concern is that at some point next week, we lose a lot of control over these things.
Thank you.
And I think we need to keep that in mind while we're having these discussions, so.
Well, that's, oh, go ahead, Al.
No, thank you, Dennis. I really think that we've got to take that into consideration at this point, because we set a precedent. If we go with eight post-September 1 and 840, which I would think we are already there, that puts us in a position where if they want to work with us and come back and deal with this, then, you know, my proposal would be they ought to be thinking about coming back after this next meeting that we're going to be dealing with tonight. But at the same time, I will also say, am I looking at where the Ice House is going to have parking to the, you know, sort of the, that whole area? Is that outdoor only?
Yes, the surface parking.
Surface parking.
The structured parking will be here in between the units.
Well, that's going to be really ugly for that whole corridor, because you go in the corridor, there's no such parking like that. Okay, that's number one. Number two is add the congestion in and out of that one area, because unless it's after hours, I'll be honest with you, during the day, morning and in the afternoon, it really gets, and they're coming off of 161. They really need to think about reorienting, and we know who and why the developers go in the ways, because who they are and what the building they own. So the I-house is not the real push. I mean, yeah, they're using that, but I've met with them both at the second go-around we had with them. I really wish they'd come back, deal with eight stories, and take a look at how they can reorient if they got along 161, because that's what we talked about right at the beginning of all this discussion, so. But I'm more concerned about that if we go with something lower than eight on height before or after September 1, we're going to set a precedent for other developments. So thank you.
Adam?
Yeah, and actually, my question just follows right up on Al's last remark. All the rest of the apartment, the whole building is four stories, correct, except for that outlined red part?
Five, five stories.
Five stories, okay. Yeah, it wasn't in this picture, so. Okay, all right, thank you.
I think it's four, yeah.
Just wanted to clarify.
Mark?
The two different developments, the multifamily or mixed use, and then the Ice House, they could be done independently of each other, right? They would, like the Ice House could move forward without the multifamily and vice versa?
So the, in order to be mixed use, they need the Ice House in terms of the mixed-use zoning. So really, I mean, they're functioning as one mixed-use development. You know, if just the restaurant came forward, that's not particularly mixed use, that would be more of just a commercial activity. And it's currently, well, it's on freeway now, which would allow for, it would allow for the restaurant, so it is true.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the challenge we're running into is, this is the type of infill we're going to see as we see office buildings tore down and multifamily come in together in those areas. And I've talked to a couple people, and the challenge is going to be to find something, I mean, you can drive all through Los Cleaness where we, we're going to leave the bottom floors of all those apartments, those 5,000-plus units, and you've got four or five of them that have actually ever put anything in them. And if you don't have a draw like the Ice House or something like that, you're not really going to, you're not going to, you're not going to be able to build it out. It's just going to be empty space. And so that's kind of my concern. If you, you know, I don't know where they're at. Obviously, they're putting financial numbers to it, and if you look at the prices that they're looking at, they're comparable to what the Mustangs, which is probably the highest in the area. And so they're probably at the top of their list, and I don't think we've ever seen anybody put in their site plan what type of washing machines and dryers and things of that nature. So they're obviously making a commitment to a certain level of quality that we don't see and is not something that we could even ask of anybody else. And so, you know, I just have a concern that if this doesn't work, then we're going to get something that's going to look completely different than this, because they're going to do something with it. And I think you may get eight stories, but you may get eight stories of nothing but multifamily, and we may be looking at seven or 800 units instead of 400. And I don't know what the retail component would look like if there was one. So that's my biggest concern, is how does it fit into the neighborhood. And on Royal, if you look back there, eventually, what's going to have to be done, because I agree with you, Al, there's so much traffic on there. If you go back, there needs to be a four-way stop at that intersection, because there's a street right across from where their entrance is here. And so you'd have a four-way stop there where they're feeding out onto Royal. That's the only way you really could control that, to your point, Al, otherwise you're going to not get in and out of there. So I'm just trying to figure out, one of the challenges we have is, how do we build retail to generate sales tax in the city? Because that's one of, that's the only thing the state hasn't taken away from us yet. And, and so, and again, I'm not, I'm like you guys, I'm really wrestling with this one, because I think they've done, to your point, Mark, they have met, and Al, they have met with us, and they have talked to us about it, and they have tried to work something out. And so I'm wrestling with it a little bit. But it looks like, I'm just impressed that they're making commitments to what they're putting inside the building. David, did you, or Al, excuse me?
Yeah, let me make one last comment, and that is, at the end of the day, all of this, District 6 and 5 have over 70% of all the apartment and multifamily. Okay, now, I really don't want more, but I'm willing to look at how we can work with them. And I've met with them. It's not as if there's adversarial with them and the fellow that represents or the owner of the Ice House. It's not that, and we made it clear to them, we want to work with them. But at the end of the day, I think we have a timeframe we got to deal with, September 1. And number two, I really want to be really careful. I'd love to see, because originally, they had talked about condominiums and/or townhomes. Would have looked really well all along Royal with some kind of a restaurant development on that far-right quadrant. And then the apartments would go up along, because when you look at 161. So there was some original discussions. Now they're coming back with this, and my sense is the Ice House is driving this, because they want to be in this game. But the real owner and developer who wants to shed themselves with this property is the owners of those buildings along 114 and the Nokia building. So I guess what I'm really hoping is that they'll see what we're trying to say to them and wait till after we get through the September 1 deadline. If they don't, that tells me where they're about. It's all about money, and we're going to be dealing with more apartments, and I'm not in favor of that, so.
Yep. David?
And to your point, Al, on the traffic, you know, my wife and I went over there yesterday and actually hopped up on the property and drove around. And it's a beautiful, beautiful sight. You know, this conceptual-wise, I agree wholeheartedly with, and, you know, asking about apartments, I always ask, where are you talking about? And that's a good spot for more life and more people being able to work at those buildings right next door and keeping our offices full with quality building amenities. Plus, you've got the Ice House component that is going to draw in a lot of young professionals that are going to want to live there. And that's, but, you know, to the point you said, there's a lot of, it's always in the details. So, thank you. And, you know, Dan, with traffic's going to have to look at that. There is no access to the eastbound Frontage Road on 161, you know, so what are we going to do with Royal with the traffic currently? And there's a few things that, a few question marks on, but conceptual-wise, I do like what they're proposing on that site.
All right, next one.
All right. Item 61 is 4441 and 4435 West John Carpenter. So this is currently zoned RAB for a hotel, in a hotel that's been constructed and operating. There is a parcel on the south side that they're wanting to build a church. So it's keeping the RAB zoning, and this request is simply for variance for parking for the church. So staff recommend approval, P&amp;Z approval, eight to zero, no letters in support, and one in opposition. We just got that yesterday. There was opposition to the use of not changing it out of commercial and allowing the church, but we cannot regulate the location of a church. So I just wanted to be clear and respond to that opposition. So it is the Doubletree Hilton, and the property is owned by the hotel, but it is a separate tract. And so here's the site, and the yellow here, the request is only for these pieces of four or five parking spaces that are within that 30-foot setback adjacent to 114. And again, it is intended to be for a church, and they, I don't think they've decided whether they're going to have fixed pews or open seating, but they indicate that they will be able to provide the adequate parking for the church. The setback is supposed to be 30 feet, and they'll be about half of that. Just some pictures of the property. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So is Hilton going to still own the real estate and lease it to the church, or is the church going to own the real estate?
That I don't know.
Because if the church owns the real estate, then it's tax exempt. But if Hilton owns it and they're leasing it and building it, that's a different story. Okay.
All right. I think the next one is our amendments. Daxton, can you bring up the other? So the next two cases are the amendments that we've been working through for several months. So the first case is item 62, it's 2025245 UDC, and this is the bulk of the amendments that we've been working on. And so this ordinance, it does a, the minor, the first one is deleting the motor freight terminal under light industrial. That was duplicated, so that's really more of a formal formality to clean it up. And so it does remain in the light industrial uses, regulating or amending the multifamily development regulations, doing some work on the parking regs and some definitions. P&amp;Z did do a hearing on this on August 4. There was a lot of discussion about height, which we'll talk about today. They did recommend approval with that amendment to eight stories by a vote of seven to one. So running through, again, the amendments that are included in this ordinance amendment, the applicability, it applies to all multifamily and mixed-use residential development, does not apply to the Heritage Crossing District, because Heritage Crossing, the HCD, has its own standards and, that are intentional to build out or redevelop the Heritage Crossing District. There are some exceptions for conversions based on the state law. There is some reorganization, created a recommendations and guidelines section to keep some of the design standards, they're not requirements, they are just recommendations. We are keeping some of the discretionary review framework, just in case one day we might get it back. We understand that there is no allowance for requirement to have a discretionary process, but we are keeping those inside our ordinance. But what we have done is done some scrubbing on the detail plan review part, and that is what is going to be considered at the time of building permit. So for minimum height, the P&amp;Z did recommend eight stories minimum, and again, there was a lot of discussion. After some further discussion and working through some of the different options, the staff is recommending eight occupied stories and to be greater than 85 feet.
Jocelyn, if I could, I wanted to ask Wayne to come up and explain why we're recommending that eight stories and greater than 85 feet, and what the implication of that is relative to construction type and materials for the structural framework, so.
Thank you, Philip. So in regards to the structural framework, every building type has limitations. And if the goal is to have that highest level of quality as what's been proposed earlier, the best way to do that is to ensure that we're a minimum of eight stories and greater than 85 feet, because at that's the point, those are the threshold. The conventional style, even with a podium, is limited to 85 feet or less. So to move into that next category, it has to be at eighty, greater than 85 feet to get to those, to that level of quality that has been asked of us.
I appreciate that. That's an important consideration, because I know that in the case we just talked about, the Ice House, they're talking about doing seven stories. I know at our last council meeting, we talked about, well, six stories, would it be, we'd know there would have to be steel construction at that point, but that's not necessarily true. You could have a concrete pedestal and then wood construction on top of that.
That's correct. It's considered a podium, so you could have multiple floors underneath a podium, which is that concrete and steel that you speak of, but then you can go with conventional construction above it, but that threshold is 85 feet. You can't exceed that 85 feet to use that type of construction.
I think in our last conversation, there was probably a mistaken belief on our part that when you talked podium, you meant like a parking garage podium, which is something we typically see. But a podium can also be a kind of a reinforced first two or three floors that are occupied with either residential or commercial units, and then having a different type of construction on top of that. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Wayne, by requiring greater than 85 feet, the entire structure-- from the grade
Grade from grade.
To the roof
To the roof.
Would need to meet the higher standard of construction.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so this makes sense then to me.
All right. So that is for all multifamily and mixed-use citywide. In the urban overlay and the high-intensity mixed-use, so in urban business overlay, there's already a minimum of 120 feet, and so we are just clarifying that the proposed would retain that minimum of 120 feet. And we've also added a definition in there to mirror building codes, to make sure that we're consistent in the determination of height. And if the base zoning district allows greater than 85 feet, then they can definitely build more than 85 feet, and we would welcome that.
Well, it's greater than eight stories and greater than 85 feet.
Yes.
So if they wanted to go nine stories, if the base district allowed the ninth story, then they would be able to do that.
Questions?
Okay. Unit mix, all these have not changed. The height was the main change from last time we've discussed this. So unit mix, more than 25 units, half of them have to be, or half of them could be the same number of bedrooms, so you'd need a combination of one or two bedrooms. More than 50 units, we would need some three bedrooms. And the unit size, that just carries over from the existing regulations, so we are going to retain those. For landscaping, we want a 25-foot landscape buffer when you're adjacent to a single-family, zero-lot-line duplex or townhouse district. The new state bill requires no greater than a 25-foot setback, so that 25-foot setback would have to be a landscape buffer with trees every 25 feet, and no paved areas, essentially no parking driveways, loading areas, dumpsters could be in that buffer area. We also want street trees every 40 feet on center. They would be on the private property, but ideally within 10 feet of the public sidewalk. Open space, the total percentage is a little bit lower than the current, it'd be 20% of the gross area, so we are leaning more heavily into the amenities versus the size of open space, also to accommodate the new state law. But 40% of the open space should be usable or improved. There are some required recreation amenity types, and we also would request that they do one elective, or would require they do one elective amenity type. We also want some shade through canopy trees or shade structures, and also things like seating, waste receptacles, things like that to make it more of a pleasurable usage of that area. We left this in, just again, to put a kind of a face to the name type thing of what a typical multifamily is. This, of course, doesn't meet the standards that we're proposing today, but it shows some of the layouts of the open spaces in the dog park, some of the walking trails, and things that a modern apartment complex provides. For private outdoor space, balconies would be a minimum of six feet in depth, 60 square feet. The ground units would have 120 square foot fenced patio area. Parking, we would, do not want parking between the building and the street, that creates a better urban environment. 50% or half of the parking spaces would need to be covered through a carport. No compact or shared parking spaces. The bill already limits us to one space per unit, we want to make sure all of those spaces are usable. We require some bicycle storage scattered throughout the development, so one room for every four units, and an enclosed secure room. And fencing between multifamily and the single-family, zero-lot-line duplex or townhouse would need to be an eight-foot masonry wall. The amenities inside the development, the individual units would need laundry connections. There would be a gym or fitness center, a clubhouse, a remote work center, and they would need to choose two elective amenities out of these uses, or if they have other amenities, we can consider those as well. The ground floor units would need to have stoops, covered porches, and to close front patios, and then we would want some articulation in the roof design. So in the density and mixed-use, where, this is actually, we have it here when we were discussing, it was actually in the next amendment, we've removed the density requirements from the TOD and urban business overlay districts, so we default to the requirements of 840. And then in the mixed-use require, or mixed-use uses that are now being required that we don't have standards for, we're just setting some minimum standards at this point to be 35% non-residential uses and that the ground floor commercial be commercial-ready. We are requiring a signposting of a large sign, a large sign on the property, basically letting people know what is being built and why. It was not done through the city's process, it's done through the new regulations of the local government code, some information of when it's going to be completed, and some contact information for both the developer's website, and then we also have created a website, irvingtexas.gov, multifamily by right, with information on the bill and the ordinances that have been done. Finally, we've added some definitions to be consistent with the new Chapter 218 of the local government code. Heavy industrial use is consistent with the bill, because that definition allows for hazardous conditions and noxious or offensive considerations. We thought it was important to define those, so that if those come up, those are very clear about what the parameters are. And we've also brought over the definitions of mixed-use and multifamily from the local government code into our definitions. And then the next amendment, item 63, Case 264, this is the ordinance where we removed the density from the urban business overlay in the TOD districts, so that we let the, let Section 840, Chapter 218, regulate. We also had to do a couple of amendments to the subdivision ordinance to accommodate the new adequate public facilities and stormwater drainage and management, so the adequate public facilities, we just reworded that to refer to the new chapter. And then we are deleting it out of the subdivision ordinance, because part of the action today will also be to create a new chapter in the local, in the land development code for stormwater management. So pulling it out of subdivision and putting it into a land development code. Purpose for that is so that it's not only applicable time of platting, and we don't have any conflict of people saying they don't have to comply because they're not platting. And this was, the hearing was held last week on August 18, and they recommended approval of a vote of 6 to 0. So this kind of gets into some of the detail again. We took out the density, changed it to reserved. We clarified the applicability of the regulations they apply to all of the, all of the standards of 313 apply to the multifamily in the urban business overlay, and again, this other section also refers to 313. And so we wanted to make sure it was clear that the regulation 313 superseded the regulations currently in the urban business overlay. And again, TOD took out the density and added some language just about the design of the area. And these are the regulations for, I got ahead of myself apparently, adequate public facilities, reworded what was in the subdivision ordinance, and just pointed to the new Chapter 53. And then land development code, again, just removed this completely, so that we deferred to the new chapter. And that's all.
Do we really, do we really need the TOD district anymore? Or can we call it the Live, Work, Play District?
So we've been working, because you have commented, we are working to scrub that into a different type of mixed-use district, acknowledging that maybe it's not quite so T. So we, staff has been working on, and we will get it to you. This just kind of got us off the rail a little bit from that exercise.
Yeah, and the only reason I bring it up is because I think more and more, as we look at what's going on down in Austin, they're basically putting us in a box where we don't have the dollars to do the things we've done. You know, we were fortunate to be able to buy the land for the Levy Plaza, so that we have the open space for around 5,000 hotels, or multifamily and hotels and everything, and we, you know, worked with buying the land for the dog park, redoing the Williams Square, all those things that we had dollars to do to, because there was the density that is there today. And I think we're going to see, as we know, where the density is even going to get more. So it's almost like we've got to, and I appreciate what you're trying to accomplish here, to look at how we provide those amenities within these areas, because there's not going to be a way for us to, number one, land for us to put it on, number two, dollars for us to build it and maintain it. So I think what you've come up with is pretty adequate to address, you know, the animals and the exercise and the kids and things of that nature, so I think that's a, that's a huge deal. Any questions about any of what we went over? Okay, well, that brings us to the end of this. Why don't we take about a 10-minute break and then come back in executive session and finish up those couple of things we've got there, and then we'll get back on the agenda. So, K O., you want to read us into executive session, please?
Yes, sir, happy to do that. Time is 2:45. The Irving City Council will convene into a closed executive session. This relates to deliberations of real property and economic development negotiations.
Number 10 to the end zone. Incredible. And it is six for the Vikings.
We are on location in New Orleans for a special edition of City Source. The reasons why we're here coming up, also the news from Irving, including this.
Tall task. Irving firefighters are in training focusing on Irving's high-rises.
High-rise is very high-risk.
They can be very taxing on the individual and the firefighter and crews.
See why this training is especially relevant right now. Chef challenge.
I'd like to go on a flavor adventure.
Chefs from across the country converge in Irving. See them in action as they work against the clock for honors. Plus, how a student pursuing a goal is helping the city, and results from the animal adoption event called Clear the Shelters, now on City Source.
Hello and welcome to City Source. I'm Thomas Gandy in New Orleans, Louisiana. A couple of us from the ICTN team are here for the annual conference of NTOA, National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors. Of course, that means a lot of talk here about how cities use video. Also, an award ceremony. More from that at the end of today's show. But let's start with the news from Irving. Several fire departments from across the DFW region are taking part in special training to keep high-rise buildings safe, and we caught all of the action.
Refining their response, making sure they're ready.
You need to flow this water to get your pressure set.
Irving firefighters are practicing their response to fires in high-rise buildings.
You just end up putting this on the actual stem, and you're able to adjust it.
And they are teaming up with neighboring departments.
You need to be able to just have it be second nature.
Irving has a lot of high-rises, including the Sheraton DFW where this exercise is taking place. Many are older buildings, some are newer. All present challenges, but the response typically begins in the same place.
This is the fire control room. This is what we call the brains of the building. Whenever we come in off the rigs, we're going to come in here and check what floors are in, are on fire. Biggest concern and our biggest challenge with the high-rise fires, how do we get our people to whatever floor the fire's on? Most of our fires we go to are on the first or second floor of a two-story house or a one-story house, so that's fairly easy to do, but our biggest challenge here is how do we get 40 or 50 firefighters up to, say, the 20th floor?
There's a box of these in the fire control room, grab one. Right now, if I plug into here, goose should pick up, but if you don't let go.
So elevator operations are a priority, but depending on the emergency, they may not work.
Ooh, that's what I wouldn't trust it. Right, and that's why we want to leave somebody in here.
In this situation, once you have capture, you would literally just start carrying or dragging until you've captured the load, and then you would start the port entry technique, okay?
In this scenario, crews are practicing how they would get an injured firefighter out of the building.
Go around and, but before you get to the next one, call lower slow and push through the first pipe.
Most stairwells, you know, they're designed to be closed in, so a lot of times you can segregate yourself from the fire, seclude yourself from the rest of the building to smoke the fire, and then lower either the patient or a firefighter down that stairwell.
Even though you may not have a whole lot on you, you can still do a lot with the little bit that you have.
While all of that action is happening, this is command, where chiefs are talking strategy and resources, really looking at the big picture, which is especially important when multiple agencies are involved.
If we did have this building right here on fire, we'd rely on Capel, Grand Prairie, Grapevine, DFW, we'd rely on those other cities to help us out. We're trying to get everybody on the same page.
We want to open this all the way and then control everything from right here.
It all takes practice. These exercises are designed to go at a slower pace, so participants can ask questions and take in all of the knowledge.
We want to make our mistakes in training. We say we want to do it so often that we can't do it wrong. We don't just do it till we get it right. We do it till we can't get it wrong.
It all comes down to being ready when it counts the most.
We'd all put our lives on the line to save one citizen, and, you know, we are training, doing this is ultimately to serve the citizens of Irving.
See more from the Irving Fire Department on our special playlist at youtube.com/thecityofirving. The animal adoption event called Clear the Shelters is wrapping up a successful 11th year. Our team stopped by the animal care campus in Irving on Clear the Shelters Day, when all adoptions were free. Other attractions included free pet identification tags. We saw a lot of people looking for a loving addition to their home.
I have a five-year-old granddaughter, grandson, they're twins. They're five years old, just started school, so they have a puppy at the house. When they come spend the weekends with me, give them something else to play with.
We got a little kitten. Her name is Anne, but I think we're changing the name to Bella. Bella. I don't know, I've always been a cat person. This is his first cat. Ready to go.
We did great. We did better than last year. We had a total of 46 adoptions on Clear the Shelter Day, and for the whole month, we're about 160.
I think it's good for the community, because these pets deserve a second chance.
It was kind of crazy to an extent with how many eyes we had on this event, which is great. Definitely getting that message across to adopt, foster, to volunteer, to donate is very helpful across the board.
Clear the Shelter started in Irving, then spread nationwide through a partnership with NBC. Keep in mind, there are still pets available at the animal care campus. We will showcase one during our Pet of the Week segment. New Orleans, of course, is known for its food and the visitor industry overall. It's a big part of the economy here, as it is back home in Irving. Robert Sheik covered an event that brought attention to a hotel chain and the culinary scene. He's here with me in the Crescent City to tell us all about it. Hi, Robert.
Thanks, Thomas. Yeah, Marriott International has properties all across Irving and the entire globe. One way the company brings all those hotel employees together is through a fun competition called Masters of the Craft.
Some sizzle, some shake, perhaps this with the steak.
Mushroom steak, they go well together.
30 minutes. Spontaneous culinary creativity is at its peak for chefs like Miguel Quintero during this one-of-a-kind event.
Beef sauce with bourbon and pepper. It went from one thing to another.
Nearly 40 chefs and bartenders from across the country gathered at the Weston Irving Convention Center at Las Colinas
And we're gone!
For the Bay Area and Mid-America Regional Championship, Marriott Hotels' Masters of the Craft Competition.
Washing them under pressure and all of the components and all of the flavors they're pulling in, it's just inspiring.
Every chef from every round is using completely different techniques.
Local restaurateur David Cole served as the emcee and was astonished at this collection of talent.
Oh, man, it just blew me away.
This regional championship featured winners of local competitions for employees at Marriott Hotel properties.
I'd like to go on a flavor adventure.
The attention to detail from these masters of their craft.
The attention to detail from these masters of their craft makes the flavorful adventure a sight to behold.
Even though it was kind of rushed, right, with the time, they were wiping the plates to make sure, they were making sure that from a beverage perspective, that the juices stayed cold, that they had the right ice, that they had the right glassware, which is exactly what they do when they're back at work.
Winners of the three categories, cocktail, pastry, and culinary, advanced to the finals in Bethesda, Maryland later this year, and their emotional reactions show the professional pride at stake.
I'm just so happy, um, yeah, so happy right now.
Robert Sheik for City Source.
Thanks, Robert. The Irving City Council is scheduled to adopt the budget for the next fiscal year on September 18th. Here are some details.
The proposed budget maintains the current tax rate while funding key city operations and maintenance projects. The budget is structurally balanced and continues to fund the services and programs residents experience today. Here are a few highlights. Additional police and fire department personnel, street, water, wastewater, and drainage improvements, Fire Station 9 construction and fire apparatus purchases, facility and landfill improvements, as well as enhanced library security. The final public hearing on the fiscal year '26 budget is September 4th at 7:00 PM at City Hall. You can view the proposed budget at irvingtx.gov/budget. This ongoing work at the Center Park Recreation Center is leading to a temporary closure of that facility from September 1st to October 15th. You can see construction is progressing on the new indoor aquatic center there. During the weeks that center will be closed, crews will be doing utility and concrete work that cannot be done while people are inside the existing building. So during this time, most activities will be relocated to Georgia Faro Rec Center. While this closure only lasts until mid-October, additional work will continue. All of the construction on the Center Park Aquatic and Recreation Center, or Spark, is expected to be complete next summer. See more about Irving's initiative to elevate aquatics and recreation at irvingtx.gov/playirving.
Some Irving fire hydrants are a lot more visible thanks to the work of a student who had a good idea for his Eagle Scout project. Take a look.
Hi, I'm Anav Chug and this is my Eagle Scout project.
Anav reached out to us and wanted to see about painting some hydrants in order to earn his Eagle Scout project.
I'm gonna be here scraping and repainting fire hydrants that are old and look dusty to make them look new again.
Try to get a lot of that loose paint off. The key to painting a fire hydrant correctly is to make sure that it's clean. So they have a group coming through, they're scraping the old paint away and old dust away, and then just making sure that you have a full coverage with the paint. Grasp around your can and we're just gonna shake them.
The water department's responsible for maintaining the fire hydrants and keeping them in working order, and that way that when firefighters need to go and use them, they're available.
I chose this project because I always respected the fire department, and that's something I think is cool for firefighters to use fire hydrants if there's any fires nearby.
I think it's amazing that such young people come together and that they want to give back to their community. As I take the back of my screwdriver and I tap my edges.
I feel proud of myself. I feel happy that I get to make a difference in my community, make people around me better, feel safer, just in case anything happens. And I hope to inspire other people around me to help the community.
Now, here's some extra knowledge for you. Ever wonder why fire hydrants are painted different colors? In Irving, it relates to the size of the water main it's attached to, so you learned something new today. Now, here's a quick look at some other news from Irving.
We have been telling you about how Red Bull is bringing Flugtag back to Irving after this massively successful event in 2013, and this year's festivities are just about upon us. Saturday, September 13th is the date, and it kicks off with the Red Bull Air Force Skydive at 11:45. At noon, the Flugtag competition begins, and the event wraps up at 4:00, all at Levy Event Plaza in Irving. Among a big field of competitors, we know there will be at least three Irving teams to cheer from. One represents Irving-based 7-Eleven, then there are a couple of amateur teams taking part. While admission is free, there are also a limited number of $75 Flight Club tickets that guarantee seating and shade. Again, Red Bull Flugtag is on September 13th. Here is something else for entertainment. Movies on Main provides a chance to watch family-friendly flicks on the big screen in Heritage Park each Friday in September. It kicks off on September 5th with Moana 2, and you can see some of the other titles coming up. Each movie starts at 7:30 PM. Food vendors will be on site. Registration is open now for the 32nd Annual Trash Bash. It's on Saturday, September 27th from 9:00 AM to noon at T W Richardson Grove Park. As you see in this video from past years, it's a cleanup of the Campion Trail along the Trinity River. Attendees also have the chance to take in some exhibits and enjoy lunch afterward. Find the link to register at keepirvingbeautiful.org.
ICTN just picked up 25 national awards at a conference here in New Orleans that also included a lot of education. Here's a quick wrap-up.
The awards recognized a variety of ICTN's shows, stories, and other video projects. The recognition came during the annual conference of NTOA, the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors. We attended a lot of different sessions, including one presented by a travel influencer who shared how she gets the perfect shot on her global adventures. Very interesting to hear from her. And of course, one of the most valuable parts of this experience is networking and sharing ideas with our peers in other cities, all while we take in the scene in New Orleans.
Life ain't easy for a boy named Sue.
Welcome to ICTN's Pets of the Week. So much to talk about with Egan Dobson from Irving Animal Services. And let's start with, you've heard of a boy named Sue, this is a boy named...
Lilo.
Lilo. And Lilo is a special needs dog. Lilo is deaf, so what are the considerations for adopting a deaf dog?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, number one, can't hear you, unfortunately. So a lot of the training is going to be more along the lines of him having to look at you, look at your hands. Luckily, Lilo here, he's very treat motivated, he's very toy motivated, so he already has sit, he has like come down as long as he's looking. Lilo is very dog friendly, so he does like to play, but it would have to be with a dog who kind of understands that he can't hear, so maybe give him a little bit more patience.
And Lilo is so much fun, just in the time that we've been here.
He's an absolute goofball. I mean, only five months old, he's got some room to grow, got some things to learn, but he keeps a smile on your face for sure.
And if you want to change the name...
Oh, doesn't matter, he can't hear you.
So this has been such a busy month for you. First, you had the mega adoption event. How did that go?
It went so well. We took about 40 dogs and puppies and ended up adopting out 39 dogs, and most of them being actually our large dogs and more of our extended stays.
And then Clear the Shelters Month is wrapping up. Oh, Lilo, excited about Clear the Shelters Month, hoping that you'll go home. So tell me how Clear the Shelters went.
Yeah, Clear the Shelters was great. We ended up doing more adoptions this year than last, resulting, oh, hello, resulting in 46 adoptions.
Just on the Clear the Shelters Day alone?
Just on Clear the Shelters Day alone, and for this entire month, we're looking at 160 and still continuing.
But it's also important to mention that even though you've had all of these adoptions, new animals are coming in all the time, so there's still a selection here.
Absolutely. I mean, obviously, we always need help in our large dog area, is that's the first place to really get full first, but we do see more of our smaller dogs, more puppies coming in, so if anybody's still looking to add a pet to their family, they can just stop on by.
Let's update our dog from last time, Mallory. I don't understand why Mallory has not gotten adopted.
Yeah, Mallory just gets really overlooked. In her kennel, she's a little bit more noisy, she's jumping up at the bars, she's just really excited to see somebody. Outside of the kennel, like Mallory's already a staff favorite. She's very quiet, she's potty trained, she's kennel trained, like she has such an amazing list, she just gets overlooked while she's with us.
And you have a positive update on Soul.
Oh, she got adopted at the mega adoption event. Her owner's super sweet, and it sounds like she actually already has a doggy friend in the home.
And a viewer favorite, Miss Meatloaf. You were hearing some positive reports.
Yes, so she went to a foster to adopt, and she has since been adopted.
Right, a lot to love.
Lots of love.
With Miss Meatloaf. And we definitely want to thank you, our viewers, for watching and sharing these segments because we've had so many positive outcomes the last few months, getting pets like Miss Meatloaf adopted and so many others. And now let's find Lilo a home. So much energy and love to bring to your household. Egan, thanks so much.
No, thank you.
And you can visit the animal care campus at 4140 Valley View Lane. Check out the websites you see on the screen for the latest operating hours and to see more adoptable animals. And now here's a preview of what's coming up on the next City Source.
See the improvements now complete on the Lake Carolyn Promenade in Las Colinas and find out what it means for residents of the area as well as visitors to this Irving attraction. Plus, city leaders turn out to celebrate the extension of Conflans Road. Those stories and much more next time on City Source. Here's how to connect with us. You can email us at ictn@irvingtx.gov. Our YouTube channel is youtube.com/thecityofirving. We hope you will subscribe and hit that like button on the videos you watch, and we always appreciate it when you leave us some positive comments. And you can look for updates on events and initiatives across the major social media platforms at the City of Irving.
And that's it for this special edition of City Source from New Orleans. Thanks for watching. Stay safe, and we'll see you next time.
Most children are back in school, but they may not have all they need to get through the year. The backpack-to-school drive continues here at the South Irving Library. Help Irving kids feel cared for and confident by donating a new or gently-used backpack or lunchbox through the end of August. Beat the heat at Irving's outdoor pools through Labor Day. For the rest of August, you can still enjoy a dip in one of Irving's pools on weekends from 1:00 to 7:00 PM. And before they close for the season, the pools at Simran, Lee, and here at West Irving Aquatic Center will be open on September 1st from 1:00 to 6:00 PM. Who doesn't like free? Thanks to a community sponsor, we can all visit the Urban Archives and Museum through September with no admission fee. And on September 7th, you can also enjoy a free dozen-led tour of the permanent gallery and learn all about Irving history.
A hot summer evening turns into a cool country concert that keeps the beat alive at Heritage Park.
Well, it's great to be with you all today. Thank you all for coming out. We built this park for the people that live here in the city and the people that want to come visit.
995 The Wolf teamed up with the City of Irving to host the Texas Tahoe Summer Finale Party, featuring country artist Shane Prophet.
I'm gonna have something for everybody, and it's gonna be a fun time.
That's how it ought to be.
And headliner, American Idol winner Scotty McCreery.
Girl, I gotta see you tonight, tonight, tonight. We always love coming out here to Texas. Good to be here in Irving. I feel like a lot of times we get to go all over and it's all about us, but tonight's about the community, and to me, that's, that's a cool thing.
It's another complimentary free event that we're doing, but on top of that, just a great way to promote this very diverse community that we have and a place to come and have it at.
Along with the concert, this event includes an exciting Tahoe giveaway.
We are giving away a beautiful Z71.
Chevy Tahoe.
From Clay Cooley.
Almost 200,000 people registered to win, and after narrowing it down, 50 of them are randomly given a key that will potentially unlock their special prize.
Whoever opens that lock, opens up the chains, gets the bob, and they own the all-new Chevy Tahoe from Clay Cooley Auto Group.
And then they pass out on the stage because they're so excited.
Ah, Joseph. Look at the bright side, you're off work.
Lucky number 33, Vicki Hale, mom of three, won the keys to the brand-new car.
Wow, that's it. 33, one. And 995 The Wolf and New Country 96, three, hit that thing.
Wow, that's it. Vicki, what are your thoughts right now?
Oh, my God. Oh, my God, gee. You just don't even know. It's gonna change my life tremendously. I went through a divorce and I need a truck, trailer, and things like that, and I can't do it in my Malibu. Been telling her I want to get a truck so we can haul stuff. I don't need that anymore.
I'm her best friend. There's no one better than her that deserves this. She raised her kids all alone and has never had anything this nice. I mean...
I do now, though.
Yeah, she's got it now.
Following Vicki's life-changing win, the community enjoys listening and dancing to some of Shane and Scotty's hit music.
Looking like my plan didn't work out. Already turned into broke up. We'll be playing some of those old songs, we'll be playing some, some brand-new stuff. New song out right now with Hootie and the Blowfish called Bottle Rockets. That's some of the most fun I've ever had with music we've made. Bottle rockets in the sky, bare feet in the sand.
I like to think my music is kind of a form of therapy and an escape for everybody.
The crowd gets to come out and kind of forget about the real world for just, you know, 90 minutes, come out, have fun, bring the family, bring the friends, and just enjoy out of country music with us.
Irving Parks and Rec is spreading the message that the Center Park Recreation Center will be closed from September 1st to October 15th. The announcement comes as construction progresses on the new indoor aquatic center there. During the weeks that center will be closed, crews will be doing utility and concrete work that cannot be done while people are inside the existing building. So during this time, most activities will be relocated to the Georgia Faro Rec Center, and the after-school program will be based at the Center East Building. While this closure only lasts until mid-October, additional work will continue. All of the construction on the Center Park Aquatic and Recreation Center, or Spark, is expected to be complete by Memorial Day weekend of next year. See more about Irving's initiative to elevate aquatics and recreation at irvingtx.gov/playirving.
Anyone who does fiber arts comes to us.
We got the Sewing and Quilt Expo here in Irving. This is my third year, so this is wonderful. It's something new each year.
We have classes, we have shows, we have lectures, we have talks.
We're good to see and showcase all of our great products, entertain with what we can do with our demos. Also, one of the best parts is upstairs are classes.
Many of our classes are focused on quilting, piecing techniques, and history of quilts, but then we also have the sewing aspect of it, which is fashion sewing. So you saw with Joe Vecarelli teaching how to drape a jacket on your body double.
You sit there and go, well, how do I know what my fit is? That's a really good question. That's the most difficult question in the home consumer market, is getting that right
We have a booth called Sewing for a Cause, and there's two of our booths that we're doing with vendors.
We are doing pillowcases for Ryan Smiles for cancer, and we're also doing the veteran squares. It's called the rail fence.
All our veterans really need this, and they really love it when they are given a quilt.
You think it's maybe just a blanket or something that you see as a, it is not. It is pure artwork. You're cutting stuff down just to put it all back together in a different way.
You can look online and be on Pinterest and Instagram and get an idea for what people are doing, but actually getting to be here and see it in person, you get to see the new waves, the new ideas that are coming in, and that's what I really look forward to. There's a saying that, that my soul is fed with needle and thread, and for me, that's very true. That's what makes it special. It's, it's a way to get what's in our minds and in our hearts out into the world.
It's the Community Holiday Home Decor Swap. Through August, bring gently-used decorations for any holiday here to the South Irving Library. Then, on September 27th, stop by the library and discover decor to take home to add fresh flair to upcoming holiday displays. Bring your blankets and lawn chairs on Fridays in September for a family-friendly movie under the stars here at Heritage Park. Grab a bite to eat in the Irving Heritage District or from an on-site food vendor. Up first on September 5th, it's Moana 2. That's Movies on Main, Fridays in September at 7:30 PM. Any visit to the Urban Archives and Museum should include a stop here at the Museum Store. It's your go-to place for one-of-a-kind gifts and treasures, such as this Irving, Texas t-shirt and this cute and cuddly Mustang. The Urban Archives and Museum Store features handmade products from local artisans and other unique products.
Are you or someone you know interested in sharing your concerns? Well, good news. The City of Irving has just made it easier than ever for you to report those concerns thanks to the new Irving TX Gov app. Just grab your phone and head to the App Store or Google Play, search Irving TX Gov, and download the app, then create an account with your name, email, and password. From there, it's as simple as tapping "Report a Concern" and entering your non-emergency issue. Again, non-
Again, "non-emergency issue." Select the type of concern and add any important details, like the location or relevant photos you've taken. If you'd like to be notified of the city's response, go into Account Details and set up Notification Preferences. And while you're on the app, be sure to check out the latest news and upcoming events right here in Irving. At home or on the go, the Irving TX Gov app keeps you in the know and engaged with your city. So download the app today. From Troy and Ralph's Stadium, it's the ICTN Game of the Week. Number 10 to the end zone. And it is six for the Vikings. We are on location in New Orleans for a special edition of City Source. The reasons why we're here coming up, also the news from Irving, including this.
Tall task. Irving firefighters are in training focusing on Irving's high-rises.
High-rise is very high-risk.
They can be very taxing on the individual and the firefighter and crews.
See why this training is especially relevant right now. Chef Challenge.
I like to go on a flavor adventure.
Chefs from across the country converge in Irving. See them in action as they work against the clock for honors. Plus, how a student pursuing a goal is helping the city and results from the animal adoption event called Clear the Shelters, now on City Source.
Hello and welcome to City Source. I'm Thomas Gandy in New Orleans, Louisiana. A couple of us from the ICTN team are here for the annual conference of NTOA, the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors. Of course, that means a lot of talk here about how cities use video. Also, an award ceremony. More from that at the end of today's show. But let's start with the news from Irving. Several fire departments from across the DFW region are taking part in special training to keep high-rise buildings safe. And we caught all of the action.
Refining their response and making sure they're ready.
You need to flow this water to get your pressure set.
Irving firefighters are practicing their response to fires in high-rise buildings.
You just end up putting this on the actual stem and you're able to adjust it.
And they are teaming up with neighboring departments.
You need to be able to just have it be second nature.
Irving has a lot of high-rises, including the Sheraton DFW where this exercise is taking place. Many are older buildings, some are newer. All present challenges, but the response typically...
Good afternoon. Amelita Speck, Senior Manager of Housing and Redevelopment. As you may recall, we approved or you approved the formalization of a redevelopment land bank back basically this time last year, which helped formalize the process for the acquisition and disposal of city-owned property. As part of that process, the city went out to obtain broker services to help us with our disposal of property as we had obstacles in receiving proposals in some of our last RFP processes. So today's, the purpose of today's strategy is since we obtained those broker services back in June of this year, we've been working with them on the framework of the RFP that they will go out and solicit. And so we'll be going over the framework for each of the properties at 318 East Second Street and 100 West Rock Island. Our goal here is to solicit qualified proposals that really help to encourage the quality and a context-sensitive development for the area. So we'll first start with 318 East Second Street. This property is just over five acres, located just east of the Heritage Senior Center. It used to be 23 single-family homes, all detached. And so you'll see in the context to the area around it, there'll be others, traditional single-family home to the southeast of that. We have done projects and other infill development with some townhomes directly across the street on Second Street and further down on the 500 block of East Second Street. And then it is surrounded by some other small commercial properties, such as some restaurants. We'll have the new Alma Coffee and Bake House just next door at Britton and Second as well. So strings of this property is just the walkability and overall access to the downtown area as well as utilities on site. There is a sewer line that goes down the middle of this property. There, and in regards to drainage, though, there will be an improvement that will be made here in the near future. The MDU has done a study of the area and will be going forth and designing some upgrades to the drainage that will positively impact this property and won't require a developer to have to do a detention pond. So that will be a positive for this future development. And then the overall size, this really helps with the flexibility of a phased approach and the possibility of a variety of housing types on this property. So when we're looking at creating the framework, we first wanted to look at what is allowed by right for the zoning. So this is in our Heritage Crossing District. And as you may know, there are three sub-character zones of the HCD zoning. This one is the neighborhood mixed-use zoning, which is the lowest intensity of the three. So we'll see more of our small-scale development that both blends the residential and commercial activities such as smaller office and neighborhood services. By right, this zoning allows for a single-family detached housing, townhomes, a multi-unit home between two to four. But the added criteria to that is it must resemble the appearance of a single-family home and duplexes. On the commercial side, it allows for professional and other admin offices, medical offices, art galleries, restaurants, and bed and breakfasts. Part of HCD is it is a form-based code. So we wanted to give you an idea of what that built environment is and potential final development could be. Some of the high-level design standards included in the zoning is that it's a maximum of three stories or 45 feet. And then the building types within this sub-character really want to emphasize on the compatibility with the neighborhood character by encouraging front porches, stoops, and balconies. When looking at the market, we recently completed the retail market study back in December. And as it all looked at retail, also looked at housing to help understand what the housing mix is for the area in downtown. And the findings there showed that the need to create opportunities for more urban living. So that would be through new housing product types and some overall density. What we found here in that density to help the population grow to support the desired retail for the area. One of the key findings is that we have a very tight housing market with just 6% in vacancies. When we looked at that further, it's even tighter in regards to products that are for sale or for rent. And then we looked at what buyers would be interested, as well as renters, in regards to a preferred housing style. And the takeaway here is to show that there is a diversity of wants for the area from your traditional three-bedroom detached, single-family home to some attached residence, attached units, and smaller square-footage homes or units. So what have we done to date to help address some of those desires and the market needs in the area? We just wanted to highlight some of those projects. We have the Delaware Creek, Phases 1 through 3, which would, when Phase 3 is completed, will provide a total of 159 new single-family homes for the area. We do have three different townhome projects, two of which are completed. That will give us 45 new townhomes. And then another housing type of the TOD multifamily and a three-story mixed-use project. So looking further at the property, we wanted to assess the value of that property and as well as what the value would be in a product that's delivered at the end. So our brokers looked at current land or comparable land sales in the area. This was a little bit harder as there were not many comparable sales that were of recent in the area. Over here on the left, you'll see we did do an appraisal back in 2021 that showed this property to be about 750 a square foot. The closest property actually in distance as well as price point to that 750 was the 522 East Second. That is one of those townhome projects that ended up being a mixed-rate townhome project here in downtown. Besides that, these other properties were, are much older, so not necessarily as current and reflecting apples-to-apples comparison, if you will. Next, we looked at some improved duplexes. So what would that end product be valued at to help give us an idea of what type of proposals we may receive? So there are the improved duplexes throughout the area showing a range of $102 to $209 a square foot. And then townhome sales. These townhome sales are just actually those that are directly across on the 300 block. These were the market rate units from that 12-unit project, showing a range of just about 180 a square foot. This is a summary. They had looked at also new homes for sale. That is more of the Delaware Creek study, so you'll see 215 a square foot there. The average is for duplex being sold, again, 205. New townhomes at 179. And then just what is the current price point of what were the historic homes? Would be those that are just the older homes in the neighborhood at 209 and doing pretty good there. I did want to know, I know we have the townhomes that are on the market as an active sale at the Fifth and O'Connor, but since they haven't sold, that's why they're not included in this analysis. So this really helps to give us an idea of underlying value what we're seeing and what we can expect potentially the market to be able to bear when it comes to whatever is developed. And just want to note that when we take this out, we may receive some proposals that may be asking for some development incentives as that 750 price per square foot is a little bit high. And so in order to help keep the homes attractive for the market, there may be requests that come forward. And just wanted to note that to the council. In regards to the framework of what the proposed development vision is, we will be focusing this property to be residential infill only and not focus on the commercial uses. And so what we want to encourage in our RFP is the variety of housing types versus just one single family or one single type. So anything from a townhome, the mix of the garden cottage homes, which is a little bit smaller footprint, your traditional single-family detached, and then that unique residential development of the up to the four units. And you'll see examples here on the right of photos of the attached townhomes in the upper right. The two middle photos are those detached, single-families, but the zero-lot line examples. And then you'll see the duplex here, when you're looking at it straight on, it would look like it is one home because from that front angle, you would only see one door. And then this blue house here is actually a current example in the DFW area of what is a fourplex. So when you're looking at that, it appears to be as of one unit, one house, but there are actually four units inside. There are some older trees on that lot, but we want to try and maximize their retention as much as possible. But do note that anytime we're doing infill development, there may be a loss of trees there. But do encourage any proposals to maximize that retention where possible. We're looking for products that will, from an architecture and aesthetic standpoint, are compatible in the historic district and have community spaces and quality finishes. And overall, just wanting to promote population growth within the historic district to help support the future retail we would like here. Bid specifications include housing size, just to provide a range. It's not that they have to completely stick within these ranges, but this would help give a range of square footage that we'd be looking for. We only are listing townhome and single-family detached here, but anywhere between that 1,000 to 1,800 square foot on a townhome. And then the anticipated price point, are looking at the current market trends on MLS as of today. And so we're seeing some price points here a little bit higher than we saw in our analysis earlier. So that's where we may have to have some development incentives to help meet that. And then single-family detached, you'll have the 1,500 to 2,200 square feet, 266 per square foot. We looked at some similar projects to see how, if this is successful in other areas within the DFW area. So one is in Carrollton called Thomas Place. And this is, was an infill project that was just outside of their downtown commercial core, but gets into their historic residential neighborhood that is abutting that downtown commercial district. And so perfect, pretty good, similar project in regards to features of a historic neighborhood with single-family homes as well. Larger square footage, but what they did here is they had a mix of townhomes and attached townhomes and single-family detached, single-family, excuse me. And then placed them through where it wasn't just one row, one section being townhomes and one section being detached, single-family, but found a way to incorporate them together. So you'll see here are some example photos where they also looked at how to diversify the material palette from using brick as well as different siding on some product. So some of the attached townhomes in the upper-left and bottom-right, and the single-family detached in the upper-right, bottom-left. And then here's a expanded view to show how they would have an attached unit next to some of the detached to show that it was a neighborhood built to look as if it was infill and had been there for a while versus just one plopped-in development.
Kind of the same way that you see up in the old Cowboys facility, you have pretty much a similar look of the single-family and...
The villas.
...family and everything coming together, almost identical to that.
Another similar project was in Midtown Midlothian. So while this is a community that's further south, it is an infill project in some larger acreage. Yet what was successful here or is successful, they are doing a phased approach. And again, looking at how to integrate various housing types into a project. So this shows a range of the traditional, single-family detached to townhomes to the village garden home style, which is smaller, and some multifamily in this one. And then it being a larger project, they are showing how they're bringing in retail on some of the outskirts of the residential development. This is a phased project, but just to show what some of those homes are looking like on the ground now, as well as the renderings, the Cottage of the Year, looking at that more traditional architecture. This is an example of an attached townhome within this project where it looks like a larger one building, but they are four separate units. So that's 318 East Second. We'll transition to the 100 West Rock Island. This is just over a half-acre right by our dart station. So great walkability, again, utilities on site and has the potential for a mixed-use product here, whether that's retail office or other communities-serving uses. This is in the sub-character zone called the corridor mixed-use. So this is kind of that mid-intensity, if you will, so a little bit denser than the neighborhood and really promoting mixed-use with ground floor, ground floor commercial and some activity in the upper floor of a development, whether that's residential or office. So by right on a residential, it could be multifamily units, eight or more, the multi-unit homes that are attached from two to eight units, again resembling that single-family home appearance, townhomes to duplexes. On the commercial side, it has the same uses as the neighborhood, but it's able to add in that retail component as an allowed use. Design standards here, you still have that max of three stories or 45 feet, but really on a built form, looking at that first floor being a minimum of 12 feet and being commercial-ready. And then parking would be behind the building versus in front. Market needs, again, we've seen this before, but gaps in our retail and service demand based on that retail study that was completed in December. We are seeing, while there's not necessarily a gap in food and beverage in the five-minute area of downtown, there is an opportunity to go further into that growth by diversifying the types of food and beverage offerings that are in downtown. And over here on the right, we're just seeing what some of the responses were, where those growth opportunities could be from that homestyle restaurant, coffeehouse, Mexican and ice cream sweet shops. And you'll even notice in some of the retail establishments, there are some food-related retail that is desired in the area from bakery, wine, and specialty food to a butcher or meat market. But opportunities for other types of retail, such as clothing and florist shops. So, here again, looking at land from a comparative market analysis. So, we looked at both actives and those that have sold. A little bit more movement on this side in a commercial part, but we did have to go wider than just Irving. There are some of these properties that were near Grand Prairie. So, we're seeing here on land value, an average price per square foot of 1,672. And then when thinking about what could be built here and what type of proposals we may get, we wanted to do analysis on the actual improvement. So, what are the active sales and sold sales on a retail building in the area? And we'll see here some actives. There are some on Main Street for just over 1.8 to less. And then we have the, on the sold side, the one that's leading the pack is when the Starbucks, Starbucks property was sold a couple of years ago. We also looked at office as that upper level could be an office or residential unit. So, seeing what, what was sold in, in the area here. And basically takes us to that summary page that we talked about. So, we're seeing an average of some older retail space of 350 a square foot, older updated at 360, new construction. That 1,200 is real, that's the Starbucks really leading that. That's the only comparable we had on new construction, retailed, sold in the area. And then our older office space and updated being about 220. We then had our broker do a pro forma, so we could see when, when the developers are putting together their proposals, they're going to be running these numbers. So, what can we expect? The first, the upper pro forma is based on what the market lease average is, which is just over 4,500 square feet and based on the average of $20 per square foot. You'll see here when we're looking at a range of cap rates, what that value of the property is after the improvement goes, is completed. And you're just seeing about between a one to 1.1 million, which would show that out of the 1,672 price per square foot, you can definitely expect some development incentives would be required as that would, the land would be holding so much value in that project. We then looked at, well, we did our TIF II plan that did an assessment on what could the redevelopment be on this particular piece of property, which gave us a higher square footage of what could be built. So, that was closer to the 11,000 square feet of what could be anticipated to be built to help our, our TIF. That greatly increases the financial sustainability of a future project there, but it would be one of the first for the downtown area. And so, we may have to, we may get some incentive requests because it would help bridge the gap and catalyze market confidence for the, a new type of project like this in the downtown area. So, again, wanting to put that out front to not be surprised if that's some of the things that we get, some of the, excuse me, proposals. So, the vision here, this is actually a vision drawing from some work that was done with the committee back in 2011 of what they wanted to see as a vision for downtown on this particular site. And this reigns true with what we have in idea of the built form. So, retail downstairs and at least a second story, at least one second-story building for that office or residential upstairs. We anticipate it'll probably receive more coworking or an office use upstairs, but again, residential is allowed. And then just being more of the sustainable urban design being emphasized, looking at that door anchoring towards the intersection, for example. Similar projects, another one in downtown Carrollton. There were two here that, these were rehab projects where there was an existing upper story and they rehabbed the one on the left to provide some office uses. And the one on the right was to offer residential uses both over restaurants. So, the pro forma here showed, this one's probably the closest to what we could see in a potential project on this property with a total cost of 1.2 million for that rehab, rentable square feet about 8,200 and closer to the estimated lease rates. We could probably anticipate when this project would be built. Another similar project is the Frisco Square. These are newer, new builds and new construction, obviously higher density with going up to four and five stories. But again, the concept of mixed use with the retail on the bottom and either office or residential up top. So, here we're seeing on their pro forma, similar costs in about that 1.3 million with a tenant finished out an acquisition, but they're able to get some higher lease rates just due to the proximity to some other amenities in their downtown area like the Toyota Stadium and some other projects that they have going on. So, that overall is our framework for what we'll be including in the RFP. The next steps would be to gather any of your feedback to include in the finalization of an RFP that we look to release and start soliciting by the end of September or finish it in September, release in October. We have to have it open for a minimum of 30 days per state statute since we're using a broker. So, we anticipate being able to bring back a recommendation in early 2026. So, with that, any questions and wanting to see if you're supportive of the overall proposed framework for the RFP?
Questions?
We have our brokers here if you had questions for them as well.
Melody, you did a great job of presentation there.
Great, thank you.
No questions. You haven't captivated. I think that there's a couple, there's Al.
Can we hear from the brokers what some of their opinions are as to this kind of potential projects that we're endeavoring on that are going to? Do they want to talk? I'd love to hear from you.
Hello. Haven't done this before, so it's kind of scary. My name is Thaimi Lim. I'm with Century 21.
Hi, and I'm Frances Cruz, the District Sales Manager for Century 21.
Okay, as far as the 100 Rock Island goes, there were some concerns that we had due to the limited spaces, especially with the parking. So, as far as that we can concern, the, the city streets could be converted into the parking availability. We originally started with the residence or residential being on top, but then once again, the parking issues where that we had to have assigned parking for the residencies. So, we kind of threw into the, the office option on top, and I think that will, pretty much will work out better.
Move it closer because I'm short. Okay, thank you very much. So, I helped with some of the Second Street projects. We are very excited both on Rock Island and Second Street. We feel that these are very marketable properties and your city staff, I want to commend them, Amelda and her team, they've got a very clear vision of what this space could look like and it's made our job really, really easy. And so, we're really looking forward to bringing some good projects to you guys and we're excited. I think once we're able to kind of hit the ground running with these RFPs, we'll be able to bring you back some projects that you'll be looking forward to.
Dennis?
Yeah, I want to go back to the 100 Rock Island question. You had mentioned about the need for parking and you basically said possibly using the Main Street, the road itself as parking. So, are you saying basically from Irving Boulevard north to Rock Island, that portion of Main Street, you're saying you'd be eliminating for travel but used as parking?
Well, sir, at this point, we are kind of brainstorming. We haven't, we have everything rock solid, but we are kind of looking this opportunity in every single directions. So, it was come to show, we will probably would have to work something with the city to eliminate the parking issue, but at this point, depending on the, what kind of building and what kind of size that's going to be taking the space and how much space that we can utilize it to become a parking space, there will be something that we will have a more solid picture, you know, about a couple of months.
Okay, so as I think about the parking and then I think about that lot, and I'm trying to envision, what could you build on that lot that you would actually have enough space for parking without using Irving Boulevard? So, do you believe that lot is large enough? And I don't know what you're going to look at building, but since you're talking about parking, you think that there is going to be an issue with being able to build a building and having a parking on that small of a lot?
Well, sir, the one thing that I have found out these days is the investors work miracles these days. So, I'm sure the given size of the lot, we will have ideas from the builders and the investors. And that's something that, that we will communicate with the city and see how far we can go as far as the size-wise. But once again, I apologize, we are at the brainstorming stage. We don't have a rock solid picture for you yet.
And I understand, yeah, I just, I appreciate.
Yeah, I, I think for us, Marso, it was giving you guys a perspective of some of the challenges we might experience as we're reviewing developments. And so, parking is something we're aware of. One of the reasons why we encourage potential office space versus residential is it would alleviate some of the concerns on parking. But I think overall, we'll have to wait and see what comes in. But it is kind of food for, you know, something to keep in mind as we evaluate projects that we're going to have to keep an eye on the parking requirements.
Okay, thank you. I have a question too. Who owns, okay, I call it Heritage Forest, but the, the, yeah, the
Chase Bank. Chase Bank.
So, have we ever considered maybe trying to purchase that or getting that piece of property to either provide parking or build something on? I mean, because I mean, it looks, it looks nice to have trees, but to me, every time I go down through there, I'm like, that's a waste of a piece of property.
We haven't gone through what we're going to target for acquisition quite yet as we were trying to focus on just the, start disposing of our property to help encourage the development. And then the next phase will start seeing which properties we want to start targeting for acquisition, if that's one of them. Okay, we'll take that note.
Mark, yeah, for Second Avenue, there is a discussion of both of single-family homes and also town homes. Do you have any ideas as far as like which one is, would bring in a higher price?
I, I think it'll be interesting to see how the developers bring them in between the combination of single-family and town home use. I think at the end of the day, it'll depend on the desired density of the developer. Overall, based on what I saw of the Thomas Place development, it, it was pretty mixed and they were very close in pricing. You saw in the area, an average of 206 dollars a square foot, which kind of tracks exactly kind of where we're going. So, I do believe that we're probably going to see a range somewhere between four and 600,000 on the large end of a, of a unit. And so, these will, hopefully, what we'll see come in is some high-quality development projects.
I want to put this out there because I've talked about it before because it seems like it comes in too late that whenever it comes down the pike that, you know, we do have single-family homes down there, but there's not playgrounds. And so, there's green belts, which is nice, you know, but it's, before, I think we do want to encourage the single-family homes, also town homes too, but park spaces, I think is a necessary component of what we do down there. And I don't want to like get too, too far down the road. It's like, oh, we didn't have that as part of our concept and so, it's not included.
Thank you.
Other questions? At some point, Philip, let's come back and visit that, what we're doing on the multifamily land. Because I think at some point, we need to really take a good hard look. Dennis brings up a good point about parking. I mean, that's one of the biggest challenges we have, which unfortunately is weird, but you get 10, 15 people in one of the restaurants and the main street's full as far as parking. It's really, really a funky deal. I don't know if there's, if there is a way and I would, it'd be great to put a building on that site, but maybe there's a way.
Yeah, on the, on the Lumber Yard property, we received a revised proposal from the current owner, which we're reviewing and providing some feedback, but in the near future, we would anticipate having that discussion with the council.
So, I think, you know, we should send the darts building parking lots for the zoo. I think that we probably could get them to build one right across the street from one of their actual train stops. And maybe we could get a three or four, five-story parking garage there then that would be within walkable, within a block or two of the downtown and then utilize that corner because they think that corner with the building like you've shown, similar to what you have over in Carrollton on the, on the square with that corner building that they've just redone. And they have a vent center there that they do a lot of different things. So, that would, either that or if there was a way to partner with them on that piece of property across, that's, we talked about doing retail below the multifamily because there is a lot of parking that goes there if you use the 220, 222. They need, you know, parking over in that area as well. So, that may be another spot that we would look at. But of course, you know, that means we're spending more money. So, that's, that's the other issue, but it may be worth if we can get decent real estate sales from the sales of this, if we could get a parking garage in there so that they're actually, if somebody does come downtown, there, there's a place for them to park. David, I
Yeah, well, why, why would they build a parking garage at a destination on a train? I just, that wasn't my question, but Amelda, thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate this and look forward to the RFPs.
Thank you.
Let me, excuse me.
Al.
Sorry.
I'm curious because I'm looking at that and I now visualize exactly where it is. And I see around, there's no single-family homes around it. So, my sense is that probably proposal-wise, it probably should be apartment, multifamily, because then you're dealing, and then the parking comes into the play. So, I'm curious what your thoughts, you do know, have you put eyes on that piece of property?
Yes, sir, we have.
So, what do you think, if you had a choice right now, because that's what's going to have to come out of the proposal, what would you basically want to put there if you had the ability to do it?
And to confirm, we're talking about Rock Island, correct?
Yeah, 100, that, the one we're looking at up there.
Well, I would like to, I mean, I would like to propose that we have a building of about 8,000 square footage, two stories. They will have enough space for retail spaces down and offices upstairs. And it would have somewhat community, amenity center that could be the entire, the city could enjoy.
The reason I bring that up is right, right along the railroad tracks too at the same time. So, it's kind of an area that's not really conducive, like when you look at the other on Second Street, now that's really a nice looking, that's a nice area for single-family and other condos or town homes, things of this sort. But on this one, if we're thinking about doing something, and Amelda, you may want to jump in on this. If we're going to look at a RFP, I kind of want to think that we want to shape it. So, I'm not sure exactly what we thought about.
Yeah, so just to go back to what's allowed on, by right, so this, to your point, single-family is not around there because single-family detached is not allowed by right in the commercial cor, or corridor mixed use. The smallest you can get there would be a duplex. But this being a prime intersection of Main and Irving, we definitely want retail or commercial activity on the bottom. By having that second story and the allowable, ability to do mixed use, it could be office or residential up top. To your point, could have that multifamily or, you know, some sort of residential component. So, we're leaving both of that, whether it be office, coworking, flex space or residential on the second, could possibly be three stories even, as an option in the RFP. So, yes, that would be addressed on a residential side. The, the concern that was brought up is just once you add residential, you have to dedicate parking to those units. So, it, we just have to see the creativity that a developer has to be able to address the needs of commercial parking and residential. Yep. You're welcome.
All right.
Thank you.
Chris, where do you want to go?
Dennis said he wants to go home. That's not an option. We can go to mayor if you're good.
We can go to, Mayor, if you're good, four, five, and then seven and eight.
Okay, we'll go back to Parks Department fee update. Are you sure we really want to do this one, Chris? Joe, we've been waiting for you all day.
I'm here. Good afternoon, Mayor Council staff, Joe Moses, Parks and Recreation. Going to have a little discussion on Parks and Recreation fees. Talk a little bit about the updates that we made the last meeting and then some of the things that, some considerations for council. And also talk about what came out of the Parks Board meeting once we discuss this as well. Just a little bit of talking about the methodology of Parks and recreational fees. Public parks and recreation agencies historically have charged minimum fees regarding these services because they are essential services for the well-being of our communities. Traditionally, Irving has followed with equity-based, equity-based model of setting fees to make sure that they're fair and reasonable for all of our residents. This is just an update on what we approved the last time. The biggest changes here that I think are really going to impact our fees are the adjustment in our senior age. Now that we're recognizing seniors at 60, so that from 50 to 59, that demographic now will be in the adult category and have to pay the adult rate and not get the free services as the senior rates do. Although they'll still be allowed to use the senior facilities. As we run through this, a couple of other things, the addition of the aquatic party packages, which we saw really good success with that this summer out at Lee Park. So we anticipate that once we have our indoor facilities, that success will carry on. Couple other adjustments to our seasonal passes. The addition of having rentals at Heritage Park with alcohol. We anticipate that will also have an impact on some of our rental fees. And then increases to the rentals at the Huffman Auditorium to cover the rate for the outside security. And so what's pending now is the, the membership fees for our recreational memberships. And also just wanted to bring this up that we did discuss this at the August 11th Park Board meeting. And our Park Board was in favor of keeping fees as they are. One of the conversations we had at that last meeting, you wanted to talk a little bit about our operational budget, our revenues and expenditures. So here's our actual expenditures from.
Joe.
Yes, sir.
If I could go back to the previous slide real quick, you said the Parks Board approved keeping the fees as they are. Is that keeping the proposal as is?
The proposed, the proposed fees, which are our current fees just bundled.
Okay, so, so not recommending no change, but they're recommending adopting this change.
At the current time. Yes, no, nothing at the current time, but we did discuss, talk. And as I go through the presentation, one of the things I talked to them about was the importance of looking at how this impacts our residents and then taking that data and addressing future fee changes, especially taking a look at our non-residential rates, which I'll talk about that later in this presentation. So back to our department expenditures, these are our actual expenditures from 2024. And as you see, our total operational expenditures were a little over 19 and a half million dollars. 74% of our operating expenditures are salaries and benefits. And we break it down by the categories. Admin is a little over 900,000, 7.2 million in parks. Athletics is a little over 2 million. Recreation is 5.6 million dollars to operate our recreation centers. So that gives you an idea of basically how that spreads out across our department. When we talk about revenue, which was the impacted recovery rate, we bring in a little over 2.2 million dollars. 40% of that comes from the recreation's fees. Well, fees and programs. Recreation brings in rate at 900,000 in revenue, 150,000 of that is fees. The rest of that is program costs where people sign up for classes and things like that. So when we talk about the recovery rate, consequently, recreation has the highest recovery rate of 16%. And of course, the lowest recovery rate is in parks. Parks is a very maintenance-driven operation, does not generate revenue. So that's, that's a natural layout of it. And across the board, so our average is about 11.4 recovery rate across the board. And as we talk about that, especially, I wanted to talk about facility utilization, particularly in our rentals. We're at about 52%, so we have a lot of space left that we can rent. And we're hoping that we see an increase in that with bringing on the heritage facility in there. Another number though, that I wanted to point out to you, a number that we really pay attention to is our total participation. That's classes, programs, visitors, walk-ins, that's anybody that comes into our facilities that we have an opportunity to interact with. 1.2 million per year. That's all our programs, classes, special events. So that's how many people that we interact with in our facilities throughout the year.
Luis.
Just one thing, is that different people? Or do you, do you have Luis of keeping track of?
No, it's not different. It's not different people. You come to a concert.
So total visits.
Yeah, it's total. Yes, sir. So just to go back in history, you want to talk a little bit about the Barry Dunn study. Who was the consultant that we utilized for our feasibility study and our fee study? And gave us some revenue and expenditure projections for our facilities, for Mustang and Center particularly. So in April of 2023, we brought Barry Dunn on to do a recreation and aquatic feasibility study. And that original scope, it was to look at and assess the future of recreation and aquatics and, and the feasibility of including a multi-generational center in Irving, a much smaller center. Particularly, we were looking at adding an aquatic and a senior component to the Mustang building at the time. And then we were going to do an aquatic component to Center Park. During that study, particularly the Mustang project was revised, became a huge multi-generational standalone facility. The original facility was about 73,000 square feet. We had a meeting with council, we talked about that and got direction that we wanted it larger, more amenities, particularly on the senior side. So we ended up where we are today with a facility that is 126,000 square feet. So based out of, and I took two slides out here, I want to talk particularly about the revenues and expenditures from Center Park and Mustang. So Barry Dunn, in their study, they estimated the revenue at about 276,000 and about a little over a million dollars in expenses with a 26% recovery rate. We looked at their data, we found some discrepancies in their revenue projections. And also, we felt that some of their revenue projections were high on the number of memberships and things that they would sell. We felt that based on historical numbers that we have at Center Park. With that, so our proposal numbers was, we came down a little bit to 186,000 in revenue. And our operating expenses were 1.1 million. We felt that they were missing some staff areas that we covered in ours, which brought the recovery rate, proposed recovery rate for the new center aquatic at about 16%. We were closer with the Barry Dunn study. Again, looking at the revenue, we felt that there were some adjustments in there. We were, came in, our proposed revenue was 927,000 and our expenditures were 2.8 million compared to their 1 million dollars in revenue and 3 million in expenditures. They had a 33% recovery rate. We're estimating about a 32% recovery rate. So we were fairly close with the Barry Dunn estimates on Mustang. And again, Mustang is an unknown entity. Unlike Center Park, we don't have historical data on Mustang. We've never built a facility of this, so we relied heavily on the consultant's information on this. Just to recap of what we proposed, with these new facilities, what we're proposing is a play pass option for our Irving residents. This is something that we've never had before. Traditionally in Irving, people join rec centers, you join Lee Park, you join Northwest, and that's kind of your home center, that's where you go. We want to change that culture where you're joining Irving Parks and Recreation system. So when you get your membership, you can utilize any facility within our system. And also, this is the first time that we have a recreation center, we'll have two recreation centers with an aquatic feature inside. So traditionally, when we look at our membership, people usually get the basic rec membership and they'll get a weight room membership. The people that get an aquatic membership usually don't get a weight room membership or a rec center membership. They usually just go to North Lake. We're looking at capturing all of that under one roof and getting that out there to our residents, getting them used to this concept, to buying one pass that allows them to use all of the amenities within our park system. That is what the play pass is. So these are the proposed fees that we had at the last meeting. And basically, as you see here, what it shows is our play pass. It shows our basic membership, what our weight room membership and our aquatic membership combined, and that's what we're proposing here. When you look at what we proposed at the last meeting, which is in the first column, we compared it to what Barry Dunn proposed. And you can see that the rates are very similar. We're a little bit lower than Barry Dunn. Barry Dunn has a 11.4% recovery rate, the same as us. But again, in their Barry Dunn proposal, their, their revenue was a little bit higher in the category. But it was a coincidence that we both came out with 11.4 recovery rate. We know that council wanted some options on how, if we could possibly increase these rates. So we showed you in the next column, there is a 25% across the board, which would bring the total revenue from 149 up to 186,000, which is a 11.5% recovery rate for a 25% increase. If we did a 40% increase, it goes up to 11.7. We benchmarked the number of cities. If we kind of plopped ourselves in the middle of that benchmark, that would be 115% increase of our revenue, our fees. And that would project at 321% in revenue, I mean, 321,000 in revenue with a 12% recovery rate. The benchmark average, when we took everybody together, averaged them all out, it came out to 168 increase, 168% increase in our fee rates. And that would project about 400,000 in revenue and a 12.6% recovery rate. And again, all of these are based on our membership sales staying the same. So it doesn't calculate the fact that if we raise the rates that we reduce, that we may not sell as many memberships. This is just for showing you that if we raise the rates, the incremental increase that you get in the recovery rate based on that. And these are options for you to consider if you choose to do so. And just to show it on the individual rates, right now, our current individual, basic membership, just to walk into the facility and shoot hoops. Youth membership is $5 a year, adult is 10, senior is 5. And you can do a family membership just to come into our rec centers a year, play games and things like that. It's $30 a year. And it shows the increases for 25% and 40% across the board for those rates. And then the same thing with the fitness. If you add on the fitness, it's $100 for an adult. It's $50 for a senior, it's $200 for a family pass. We show that with a 25% increase and a 40% increase. And we do the same thing with our aquatics. Just to break it down individually compared to showing you it with the family rate. So, next steps. Again, staff, we talked with Park Board on this and, and they are, they recommend and they approved the current fee structure that we proposed. One of the things is getting our residents accustomed to the family pass and getting them accustomed to buying the larger membership that includes aquatics. This would, the rates that we're proposing right now would only impact the opening of Center Park. But it would give us time to look at how that new pricing structure is being received by our, our residents. It would give us the ability to analyze that data. And if we choose to, to make a small adjustment to our resident rate. But more importantly, to continue to look at what's happening in the Mustang area with the addition of, of facilities like Lifetime Fitness, to really propose an increase on the non-residential rates. Traditionally, we've always did like a 50% increase, but based on what we see in the Mustang area, I think our non-residential rates can be stronger than that. But I think we just need to have some time to study that and to come with a rate that we think makes sense. And have that, and move that forward in the 26, 27. So currently, again, my recommendation would be to stick with what we have. Go with the play, introduce the play pass options. Look at the data once Center Park is open. And if we want to make an adjustment to the non, to the residential rate, a small adjustment then, that would be the time before Mustang opens. And then to make a larger adjustment, again, definitely make a larger adjustment to our non-resident rate because they do not pay taxes in the city and also would help us to control usage at that facility. So, and as part of the 25, 26 budget, again, develop these processes with staff and implement the higher rates for our non-residents. And at this point, I'd like to open it up for questions.
Well, you know, once we, once that aquatic center opens, everybody's going, everybody's going to want their friends to come from other places. Just like when it opened in Capel, everybody ran up there to do it. So we might as well capitalize on that because if they're coming in from other cities, they're spending gas money, they're coming, they're doing. It's not like we're taxing our own residents. We're, and it is, you know, I mean, I was talking to Jennifer the other day and she took her daughter over to Epic. And I mean, those are like 50, 60 dollar a day passes just to go in there and swim for a day. And, you know, it's a little more detailed, but, and then when you look at what the Lifetime Fitness is getting up there, I mean, you're at 4, 400 to 600 dollars a family a month. And so I'm not, I'm not saying we should be anywhere near those prices, but I think people can afford to give more than $5 or $7 for a year pass to go into the facility. So, Joe, I agree with what you're trying to do.
Yes, sir, Mayor. One of the things, as you, you pointed out, you talked about Epic. Because of the location of Center Park, I don't feel that the resident, the non-resident rate is going to have a big impact on Center Park because we're not going to pull people from Grand Prairie. But I think it's essential to our operation that we get the non-resident rate right before we open Mustang. Because I do feel that Mustang, because of the size and, and what the facility is and the location of the facility, it will be a regional draw.
John.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry.
Just wanted to get verification real quick on one point. So the, I think this was in here, but just wanted to confirm, the à la carte options, they're not going away, right? We're not forcing people on to get everything.
No, 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 sir.
And so the, the senior rate for membership will continue to be $5, assuming we adopt the recommendation of the Park Board.
Right. That doesn't include fitness or anything like that. That's just, yes, sir.
For seniors, it'll continue to be $50 for fitness and it'll continue to be free to use indoor aquatics. Obviously, this is only for this year. Would that include Center once that opens?
Well, this is, it would impact Center, yes.
Okay. Okay, yeah, appreciate that. I really like, I like the direction that you're taking this. I think you've clearly put a lot of care into making sure that, you know, we are continuing to provide better value to our residents and not just, you know, not just changing things for the sake of them. I think this is going to be, this is going to be a huge benefit for people that want to simplify the way they interact with our, with our parks facilities. So, thank you for that. I'm, I'm fine with the, the Parks Board's direction. You know, if we, if we find that, that we want to go to the 25 or 40 at a later date, we can do that by resolution. So I'm fine with keeping it where it is right now.
Yes, sir.
Luis.
I'm not sure if Chris wanted to talk before. I'm fine.
No, go ahead.
Yes, sir, Council.
So I think I agree with John. It seems like a reasonable path to take. Just, I was wondering, when it comes to the total visits that you have, what kind of information do you have on them? Do you have breakdown on resident versus non-resident? Do you know, do you record the addresses? Do you have data on the breakdown of the areas where they come from to each?
If they're signed up in our programs or things like that, for a lot of our, some of those visits are, like, we have a youth volleyball league. And so we'll have that information on the participants, but we have a gym full of spectators. We don't capture that data on them.
Right.
So, so it just depends. If they're signed up for our classes and programs, we'll have all that demographic data on them. But we do get a lot of visitors that just come in, well, spectators that watch our leagues and activities, that we don't capture that data.
Are you planning on capturing some of that data with, with a pass, with a general pass? Do you know where people are going and where they come from?
It's, for some of our athletic leagues, I mean, it's, we haven't done that. That's, it's kind of a hard thing to do. I don't know anybody in the market that, you know, your grandson signed up for a T-ball league. How am I going to capture that data from you unless I have you fill out some type of membership form or something like that? People usually just want to come to be a spectator to those activities and leave. They don't like to give demographic, you know, data for that.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a way to get some estimates into, you know, which, you know. I'm just wondering if there's a way to get some estimates into, you know, which, you know...
A lot of it is, I mean, I guess we can make some judgment on that based on our participation rate. But again, you know, we'll have, most of our classes, programs are filled up by our Irving residents. But you may have a visitor that comes from out of town, and the whole family wants to go see, you know, that family member play some type of activity. We count them as, because they are in our facility, but we don't have data on them from coming from out of town. But we will have the people that are signed up, so. But based on what we see, majority of our programs and activities are filled up by Irving residents.
Okay. And the last thing, I do agree with the mayor, that we should capitalize on the non-residents as much as essentially just maximizing the return, not the feelings of the non-residents.
Yes, sir.
That'd be the plan.
Chris?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Joe, and I appreciate the presentation. I'm going to capitalize a little bit on what Representative, I just moved you up to, Councilman Canosa had mentioned. My concern, I'll use the word concern, for Mustang, is that when we open Mustang, it will be at complete capacity.
Yep.
I have seen very similar centers, was just in one in Utah, a few weeks ago, very similar, very sister-type facility, and it was jam-packed. With all due respect to our good friends at Cypress Waters, which is the city of Dallas, you have 3,000 residential units that are already there. They have planned and approved up to 10,000 residential units. This would be the closest...
They've already done 10, they're getting ready for the second 10.
There you go, then. I strongly support ensuring that we have a non-resident rate. I don't believe it's there to make money. My focus would be, as Joe looks upon that and as the Parks Board, Parks Board looks upon that and as you as a council approve it, I think it's going to be more of managing capacity. With the rates, even the non-resident rate and the resident rate we have for Mustang, it's going to be very popular. So again, with all due respect to all of our non-residents that will be looking potentially to attend the Mustang, I feel that we're going to have to manage that right up front to make sure that we have capacity for our residents to be able to use that facility.
Al?
Great presentation, Joe, thank you.
Yes, sir.
But it's pretty obvious to me, and then talking about Mustang in particular in the future, the aquatics along with, you know, parks and recreation are your big numbers where they... Now, obviously, once Mustang comes on, that number's going to completely be a separate number because it's going to really drive, I think, the return on that investment. But it's never going to get there because it's just, it's an amenity when you look at the numbers that we're at, vis a vis what we put in. It's not a return on investment other than health-wise, physical, amenity, all the right things that we want to do to make our communities that much more, you know, just a community, I guess, as simply as I can put it. So, now that I've said that, and we, and I do agree with you, Chris, on Mustang, big time. Because it's sitting right around all the kinds of, of communities in particular, and HOAs, they're going to use it, okay? And so, I think we're going to be outgrown immediately within the first 90 days. I don't mind putting it, so it's going to be really a challenge on two levels. How do you manage it? How do you manage not only the numbers, but what part of the non-resident numbers? So you're, we're going to have to really understand that and what that number's going to look like as far as charging. And so I worry a little bit about, okay, now, we've got a model. Now what are we going to do with the rest of the city? Which really, I'm looking at not just the southern part of the city, but, you know, what do we do with Cimarron? And how do we then try to have some of that ability to bleed off to kind of help some of that and maybe build out some of that? The just thinking that I have because obviously I'm pretty focused on that. But what really, I think, I can, I'm concerned about, I don't think we'll ever get to a threshold of pay for play. It's just that simple. And I'm kind of curious, as we start to look forward and try to use some, some, I guess, crystal balling and using the past and then looking for the next probably two years and see how that starts to really show the trends. Because that's going to really determine if we ever come back with another bond committee in the future, that that's got to weigh very heavily. Because we're talking about a fourth library. We're talking about a lot of things that are going to be loading up on, on us as a city. So, your thoughts?
One thing with capacity, again, we'll have to watch memberships. We have a lot of flexibility with non-resident memberships. We can slow that rate down if we choose to, if we see that the building's getting to capacity. So there's things that we can do with that, even with registrations, programs and classes. We can have registration for residents before we have non-residents. There's things we can do to kind of manage the capacity. As far as the Cimarron question, I mean, again, I think that's something where, that will be a data-driven answer. If we see that once Mustang is open and it's pulling residents out of there and Cimarron's numbers are dropping, then at that point, we'll present all that information, and that's a policy decision for council to make for us on which direction to go. But I think the data will clearly dictate which direction we should go in. As far as the cost recovery for these mega centers, right now, Epic is kind of the one that's been setting the mark in Grand Prairie. But everybody needs to realize that Epic and Epic Waters are two separate entities. Epic Waters is a private operation that runs to generate profit to subsidize the Epic. The Epic does not recover 100% of its money. The Epic is subsidized to the tune of a little over $1 million a year. The Epic Rec Center does not recover, it is subsidized by the city.
I am, I am not familiar with any recreation center that any city owns that has a cost recovery. You might, a full cost recovery. You might be able to get a cost recovery like our golf course that helps to recover the cost of the direct operations, but none of the debt service, none of the supportive costs, et cetera. But very rarely, if ever, will a rec center ever recovers cost. That's why the private sector doesn't build them.
And then, and to our city manager's point, now, I feel that we will have a stronger performance than Epic because the services that we provide, we're going to provide different services than Epic does. Epic doesn't have a senior facility. They're very heavily relying on fitness memberships. Well, we have leagues, classes and other types of programs that they don't have. Also, the demographics of where we're placed at compared to where Epic is at, I feel we're in a much stronger demographic, and it will be received a lot stronger than what Epic is.
Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Joe.
Yes, sir.
So, obviously, we've dedicated a lot of money for Let's Play Irving. And, and trying to recapture that investment is something that we definitely should be looking at. The, to keep the à la carte rates after doing all this investment, to keep them the same doesn't make sense. It seems, if we're going to be investing this kind of money, we should be increasing those, those fees as well. The sense that, well, we just need to make this, you know, super cheap for the, for the community, it doesn't recognize the fact of the cost. And we've talked about things that we would like to do without of our general fund that we can't because we've dedicated so much money to Let's Play Irving. So, I don't, we can't lose sight of that, it's a reality. We talked about doing more for roads, police, everything else. And so, I, the packaging, the pay, play pass fees, I hope that's going to be effective in increasing the revenues coming in. But we do need to be looking at other sources of revenue. The golf course, obviously, as Chris mentioned, has worked out really well with the restaurant subsidizing the course. You mentioned the Epic Water as a private entity subsidizing Epic. So, you know, what are, what are we looking at for that here? Are we looking at private-public partnerships for sports tournaments? We always talk about, I always talk about, sports tourism. Are we trying to encourage that, to find ways to actually generate revenue that way? We've talked about turfing our fields, which would allow us to like use our soccer fields a lot. There's a huge demand for that. Are we trying to actually find ways to like generate revenue from, from soccer fields instead of people going, I know my son goes to play in Allen or something like that from Irving, which is absurd to me, but the, also the, we've talked about, and I know, I've talked to you, Joe, about too, about increasing like the use of Levy Plaza with those tent posts. And if we could actually like, you know, have these regular posts that could be used in there to increase the rental rates at Levy Plaza, that would be a good thing to do too. I know a lot of this calls, calls for investments upfront, but if we have projections for how we can actually generate revenue overall, and of course, having events bringing in tourists, increase tax revenue for our businesses. And so, I, I don't want, it seems like we're focusing just on, these are some costs, you know, and let's just like keep it, you know, cheap. And, but I think that we do need to be aware of, of the costs that it actually is imposing on the city and find other ways to increase our revenues. And so, there are things we've talked about before, we really haven't advanced on them. So I want to be aware of that.
Okay. Joe, I think we...
I guess, do we have a general consensus to, we have a policy direction?
The other, the other thing we talked about at one point was, Joe, really, and this was kind of brought up a couple other ways, is how much money are we spending on our programs for the school? Like the after-school programs, the parks that were, or the playground equipment we're maintaining in, in their areas and stuff like that? It'd be interesting, not today, but at some point to look at the dollars that we're spending. Because to Mark's point, we're going to run out of money to do this stuff based on what the state's doing for us. So we're going to have to look at some type of cost recovery of some kind on some of this. And so, where we're doing things for other taxing entities, we're going to have to look at that and realize that they have the ability, just like we do, to raise their tax, to cover what they need. And so we can only do what we can do in the future. I think we've got to quit being the piggy bank that everybody comes to when they, when they want something because the, the bank is running dry. And so I think we might as well start looking at that now so we can wean some of those things off of us in the near future so that we don't have those expenses as our money gets tighter. So I think your area's got some opportunities there to see what we have. And by no means am I saying that, you know, these are kids that live in Irving and we, we need to do things for them and stuff like that. I'm not saying we shouldn't do that. But it'd be, you know, there's, there's an opportunity, maybe with all these new schools they're building and all that they have, maybe they can do some after-school programs as well rather than relying on us for some of those things.
We've, we've slimmed down that operation quite a bit over the years. Right now, I think there's only two school centers that are open, that's Houston and Austin. The rest of the, the rest of the rec center activities are done in our rec centers, and then our after-school programs are all done within our rec centers. When you look at that $900,000 in revenue that's generated on the Recreation Division, majority of that comes from the after-school program and summer camp.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Chris, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 items under economic development.
These were pushed from our budget retreat, so this is our...
And then we also have the chief sitting patiently.
How would you like to proceed, Mayor?
Let's let the chief talk. Since he was here all day, we don't want him to...
Derek Miller, Chief of Police, good afternoon. Last council meeting, Councilman Faff asked about some of our facility assessment overviews. So we put this together quickly just to try to answer some of those questions and fill some of those gaps in this conception, conceptual plan that we have. So I'm going to do just a brief overview. Many of these slides you've seen before through our budget retreat and many other presentations, but want to try to coalesce them together in an overall idea. Back in 2024, and then before that, actually, we started doing some strategic planning in the Police Department with respect to the future and maintain our service delivery. We began vision casting, our mission, purpose, and how we could continue to provide high levels of service. We did an analysis where we looked at our strengths, our weaknesses and opportunities for growth and the threats to the organization, and determined that we needed a key focus going into the future as we started planning for the department. And those focus areas coalesced in about, in four areas. Of course, we have to have an acronym, so we came up with this PETS acronym. So we really focused at people, equipment, technology and space. You've seen a lot of our efforts on the peoples, on the people front with regard to recruiting, enhancement and recruiting and retention. I'm here to report, you know, for the first two years of my tenure here, we set at about 40 vacancies, just told today that we only have five vacancies left, so those...
Congratulations.
Thank you. Those efforts, all credit goes to the men and women in our, in our personnel department. Increased internal communications, that was one of the mandates that I got upon taking the job from the city manager, so we do that in many, many forms. We reorganized the Police Department and focused it and cleaned up some positions. And we entered into a process where we studied our staffing, which you've heard about ad nauseam. Equipment, many advances there with respect to front-end equipment, where the police officers on the street. And so anything from tactical equipment to, you know, our police cars didn't even have ballistic protection in them, so we added those things and then flock cameras and things of that nature. Technology, again, you've heard about our real-time crime center, you've heard about our drone-first responder plans, all leveraging technology that's allowing us to be extremely effective. New CAD RMS systems, computer aided dispatch system and records management systems that allow us to be extremely more efficient as well. Cell phone mapping will help with investigation. Comes, now we come to the space part. So we asked Brinkley Sergeant Wigginton to come in in June and do an extensive objective facility assessment. That was a very extensive process. They talked to subject matter experts, leadership, and toured all of our facilities. And we asked them to develop a plan that would take the department into the future. So the things that we asked them to look at were the five-year staffing plan, the projected growth of the city, and the current needs of the Police Department. And so through that, they came in with a 20, with a 20-year plan. If I can introduce you to the, the facilities of the Police Department. The, most people don't know that the Police Department operates many, many facilities. The first one is the CJC, the one they're most common with, familiar with. There we house the jail, our dispatch center, a portion of our investigative services, South Patrol Admin and Crimes, our real-time crime center. The second location that we operate and that you're familiar with is the Family Advocacy Center. And there we have our victim services, our counseling services, our domestic violence unit, and our, our crisis response unit. And we also have our child against, crimes against children there. Our third unit that we occupy is, we have our emergency management. Emergency management falls under the范围 of the Police Department. And those individuals and their equipment are out on Rock Island. The fourth location that we operate is the Autopound. The Autopound also houses our auto theft detectives, our tow truck contractor and a lot of vehicle storage out there. The fifth facility is our training academy, and training academy is very important to us. Currently, that's where the old gun range is, and that's where we're conducting service training. Sixth location for the Police Department, animal services, you know about that. Seven is the new gun range. Now, what's not on, what's not on here are, there's a location I cannot disclose in an open forum is where our special investigative services are. And then we, we actually operate an old building at the University of Dallas for our active shooter training. So you see, we have many, many facilities, if we can go back to the presentation. I didn't get the North Station, obviously you know where that is. So we occupy all those places, notwithstanding the UD facility and not, which is about, we operate about 9,000 square feet there. We operate about 6,000 square feet for our special investigation services. But other than that, we also operate about 218,000 square feet between the CJC, the North Station, Training Academy, Rock Island Warehouse, FAC and Autopound. And so, the current state of our department with respect to facilities and how that impacts what we're doing now, and what we're asking to do is we have scattered personnel facilities across the city, which causes diffuse command authority across multiple facilities. It complicates communication, complicates cross-divisional coordination. Our coronal investigation division, which there are probably about eight divisions, are scattered between, between three different locations, which make things difficult. We have information silos that challenges us, the FAC, the issue going on at the FAC... The FAC, the issue going on with the FAC is causing consternation, as you can imagine, in a facility that was already too small. And we've outgrown our police training facility, which you know, the mandates on police training coming from the state are ever-growing and ever-changing. And then we have the Auto Pound, where some of my coworkers or my colleagues would love for me to swap places with them. We also have many complex units that are cramped and all over the city, from crime labs. I've got a, we have a very robust crime gun testing center, and the courts would tell you they didn't appreciate it when we put it up against a shared wall in the jail because every time we shoot guns trying to test bullets for forensic testing, they hear those gunshots going off. Our digital forensic lab is overgrown. You know that digital forensics is on the rise. We just had a meeting with district attorney talking about how electronic evidence is crushing storage everywhere. Real-time crime center, property and evidence, if you don't know, I don't want to share it in open forum, but about two-thirds of our property and evidence is housed off-site and is not as secure as we would hope, would like it to be. And we have several units. As an example of how cramped we are and how our needs have gone up, this is a schematic that Brinkley Sergeant did for us. And if you'll notice in the bottom left, the existing communication center is 3,600 square feet. We need to add another 3,500 square feet onto that facility for it to work. If you would like to come over and take a tour, I would be happy to show it to you. It's extremely small, and it's extremely, it needs, it needs, it needs to be larger, especially given the fact as we grow the department, we add in the Central Patrol Division and power shifts, we're going to have to add channels as well. You've seen this, five-year staffing, I won't belabor this, just know that this was the catalyst to start the discussions about the growth of the department with regards to space. This is a schematic that just takes those attributes and just projects them. Anything past five years is just a projection, as you see. We are projecting how the department could grow in that span of time. And then we layer on top of that how we think the city could grow in that time, again, using those estimates and seeing it out to 2044, we could be even, I think we'll probably bust that, but that's what we, that's being conservative. So the conclusion of that, of that study from Brinkley Sergeant's was that our current state of the police department, how we run the police department now, would probably require us to have a facility that's 200, at least 248,000 square feet. So from 218, grow into a facility that should be about 248,524. That takes staffing in the police department into account, adequate parking for the city vehicles, you know, we maintain a large fleet, detailed square footage for each division and unit, and has functional zones, includes space for community meetings, which we don't have now, training spaces and public report rooms and secure interview spaces, which we don't have now, and took inventory of storage needs and improved methods and efficiency and the capacity that we have. And so that's what, that's what the staffing study, to answer your question, really has in store for the police department as we have it today, incorporating the staffing study with it. Now, if you'll push a pause on that, you have to remember in 2015, Kamatsu did a study for us that took us into the police department and what did she look like into 2035. And then that study was redone in 2022 when we acquired some property and the bond came along. And so the planning for that has several pieces of the police department that need to grow and enhance as well. That study called for, we say alert, when you see alert, that's active shooter. A lot of, as you can imagine, this is something that is occurring all over the world, and we have to be prepared for it. It called for a North Patrol Station, an upgraded police academy, a virtual, we want a virtual reality training center. The general and I always talk about how to upgrade the training of the police department. And the way of going in the future with respect to training for police departments are stress inoculation. When the general was not a general, he probably used the MILES system that used lasers and things like that. Now we use virtual reality. We use marking cartridges where we actually put police officers into situations where we inoculate them with stress. And so that's the virtue, this is the future going forward. Real-time crime center, our property and evidence, we need, we need property and evidence center. So we basically, the vision for the police department through that study, we're growing those parts upwards of 96,000 to 100,000 square feet together. So if you layer those two, those two or three studies together, objective studies together, what the goal of the facility to be, what the vision for the facility would be, to have a facility that takes us well into the future, to take these desperate buildings that we have that equal desperate functions in the organization, bring them together in a central location. You've heard me talk about this before, this idea of having a central command. It's really a concept of having a central command and a center for police innovation and training, where we operate the police department in a more efficient way. We add these new structural pieces in that are going to take us in the future and enhance our training. And it'll, I think it's just, it'll take us in the future, it'll be, it'll be top of class. And we'll be able to get rid of some of these buildings that we have and just consolidate all these to a central police location. So in a nutshell, that's kind of the overall concept with respect to facilities of the police department that marry up to the staffing plan to take the department into the future. I know that was quick and dirty. I apologize, I'm trying to be respectful of your time. Any questions?
Questions to the chief. Chief, I think we know what you need.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Chris, you're okay with pushing the economic development stuff?
Yes, sir, we can do that.
And then going into executive?
And we go to item number eight.
Bring us back into executive session, KO.
The time is 4:41. The Irving City Council will convene into a closed executive session. This is deliberation of real property pursuant to Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072.
We are on location in New Orleans for a special edition of City Source. The reasons why we're here coming up, also the news from Irving, including this.
Tall task. Irving firefighters are in training focusing on Irving's high-rises.
High-rise is very high-risk.
They can be very taxing on the individual and the firefighter and crews.
See why this training is especially relevant right now. Chef challenge.
I'd like to go on a flavor adventure.
Chefs from across the country converge in Irving. See them in action as they work against the clock for honors. Plus, how a student pursuing a goal is helping the city, and results from the animal adoption event called Clear the Shelters, now on City Source.
Hello and welcome to City Source. I'm Thomas Gandy in New Orleans, Louisiana. A couple of us from the ICTN team are here for the annual conference of NTOA, the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors. Of course, that means a lot of talk here about how cities use video, also an award ceremony. More from that at the end of today's show. But let's start with the news from Irving. Several fire departments from across the DFW region are taking part in special training to keep high-rise buildings safe, and we caught all of the action.
Refining their response and making sure they're ready.
You need to flow this water to get your pressure set.
Irving firefighters are practicing their response to fires in high-rise buildings.
You just end up putting this on the actual stem and you're able to adjust it.
And they are teaming up with neighboring departments.
You need to be able to just have it be second nature.
Irving has a lot of high-rises, including the Sheraton DFW where this exercise is taking place. Many are older buildings, some are newer. All present challenges, but the response typically begins in the same place.
This is the fire control room. This is what we call the brains of the building. Whenever we come in off the rigs, we're going to come in here and check what floors are on fire.
Biggest concern and our biggest challenge with the high-rise fires, how do we get our people to whatever floor the fire is on? Most of our fires we go to are on the first or second floor of a two-story house or a one-story house, so that's fairly easy to do. But our biggest challenge here is how do we get 40 or 50 firefighters up to, say, the 20th floor?
There's a box of these in the fire control room, grab one. Right now, if I plug into here, goose should pick up, but if you're to let go.
So elevator operations are a priority, but depending on the emergency, they may not work.
Ooh, that's what I wouldn't trust it, right? And that's why we want to leave somebody in here.
In this situation, once you have capture, you would literally just start carrying or dragging until you've captured the load, and then you would start the port entry technique, okay?
In this scenario, crews are practicing how they would get an injured firefighter out of the building.
Just go around it. But before you get to the next one, call lower slope and push through the first time.
Most stairwells, you know, they're designed to be closed in, so a lot of times you can segregate yourself from the fire, seclude yourself from the rest of the building to smoke the fire, and then lower either the patient or a firefighter down that stairwell.
Even though you may not have a whole lot on you, you can still do a lot with the little bit that you have.
While all of that action is happening, this is command, where chiefs are talking strategy and resources, really looking at the big picture, which is especially important when multiple agencies are involved.
If we did have this building right here on fire, we'd rely on Capel, Grand Prairie, Grapevine, DFW, we'd rely on those other cities to help us out. We're trying to get everybody on the same page.
We want to open this all the way and then control everything from right here.
It all takes practice. These exercises are designed to go at a slower pace so participants can ask questions and take in all of the knowledge.
We want to make our mistakes in training. We say we want to do it so often that we can't do it wrong. We don't just do it till we get it right. We do it till we can't get it wrong.
It all comes down to being ready when it counts the most.
We'd all put our lives on the line to save one citizen, and, you know, we are training, doing this is ultimately to serve the citizens of Irving.
See more from the Irving Fire Department on our special playlist at youtube.com/thecityofirving. The animal adoption event called Clear the Shelters is wrapping up its successful 11th year. Our team stopped by the animal care campus in Irving on Clear the Shelters Day when all adoptions were free. Other attractions included free pet identification tags. We saw a lot of people looking for a loving addition to their home.
I have a five-year-old granddaughter, grandson, they're twins, they're five years old, just started school, so they have a puppy at the house. When they come spend the weekends with me, give them something else to play with.
We got a little kitten. Her name is Anne, but I think we're changing the name to Bella. Bella. I don't know, I've always been a cat person. This is his first cat.
Ready to go.
We did great. We did better than last year. We had a total of 46 adoptions on Clear the Shelter Day, and for the whole month, we're about 160.
I think it's good for the community because these pets deserve a second chance.
It was kind of crazy to an extent with how many eyes we had on this event, which is great. Definitely getting that message across to adopt, to foster, to volunteer, to donate is very helpful across the board.
Clear the Shelter started in Irving, then spread nationwide through a partnership with NBC. Keep in mind, there are still pets available at the animal care campus. We will showcase one during our Pet of the Week segment. New Orleans, of course, is known for its food and the visitor industry overall. It's a big part of the economy here, as it is back home in Irving. Robert Sheik covered an event that brought attention to a hotel chain and the culinary scene. He's here with me at the Crescent City to tell us all about it. Hi, Robert.
Thanks, Thomas. Yeah, Marriott International has properties all across Irving and the entire globe. One way the company brings all those hotel employees together is through a fun competition called Masters of the Craft.
Some sizzle, some shake, perhaps this with the steak.
Mushroom steak, they go well together.
30 minutes. Spontaneous culinary creativity is at its peak for chefs like Miguel Quintero during this one-of-a-kind event.
Beef sauce with bourbon and pepper. It went from wanting to annoy.
Nearly 40 chefs and bartenders from across the country gathered at the Weston Irving Convention Center at Las Colinas. For the Bay Area and Mid-America Regional Championship, Marriott Hotels' Masters of the Craft Competition.
Washing them under pressure and all of the components and all of the flavors they're pulling in, it's just inspiring.
Every chef from every round is using completely different techniques.
Local restaurateur David Cole served as the emcee and was astonished at this collection of talent.
Oh, man, it just blew me away.
This regional championship featured winners of local competitions for employees at Marriott Hotel Properties.
I'd like to go on a flavor adventure.
The attention to detail from these masters of their craft makes the flavorful adventure a sight to behold.
Even though it was kind of rushed, right, with the time, they were wiping the plates to make sure, they were making sure that from a beverage perspective, that the juices stayed cold, that they had the right ice, that they had the right glassware, which is exactly what they do when they're back at work.
Winners of the three categories, cocktail, pastry, and culinary, advanced to the finals in Bethesda, Maryland later this year. And their emotional reactions show the professional pride at stake.
I'm just so happy, yeah, so happy right now.
Robert Sheik for City Source.
Thanks, Robert. The Irving City Council is scheduled to adopt the budget for the next fiscal year on September 18th. Here are some details.
The proposed budget maintains the current tax rate while funding key city operations and maintenance projects. The budget is structurally balanced and continues to fund the services and programs residents experience today. Here are a few highlights. Additional police and fire department personnel, street, water, wastewater, and drainage improvements, Fire Station 9 construction and fire apparatus purchases, facility and landfill improvements, as well as enhanced library security. The final public hearing on the fiscal year 26 budget is September 4th at 7:00 PM at City Hall. You can view the proposed budget at irvingtx.gov/budget. This ongoing work at the Center Park Recreation Center is leading to a temporary closure of that facility from September 1st to October 15th. You can see, construction is progressing on the new indoor aquatic center there. During the weeks that center will be closed, crews will be doing utility and concrete work that cannot be done while people are inside the existing building. So during this time, most activities will be relocated to Georgia Pharoah Rec Center. While this closure only lasts until mid-October, additional work will continue. All of the construction on the Center Park Aquatic and Recreation Center, or Spark, is expected to be complete next summer. See more about Irving's initiative to elevate aquatics and recreation at irvingtx.gov/playirving.
Some Irving fire hydrants are a lot more visible thanks to the work of a student who had a good idea for his Eagle Scout project. Take a look.
Hi, I'm Anav Chhuk, and this is my Eagle Scout project.
Anav reached out to us and wanted to see about painting some hydrants in order to earn his Eagle Scout project.
I'm going to be here scraping and repainting fire hydrants that are old and look dusty to make them look new again.
Try to get a lot of that loose paint off. The key to painting a fire hydrant correctly is to make sure that it's clean. So they have a group coming through, they're scraping the old paint away and old dust away. And then just making sure that you have a full coverage with the paint. Grasp around your can, and we're just going to shake them.
The water department's responsible for maintaining the fire hydrants and keeping them in working order, and that way that when firefighters need to go and use them, they're available.
I chose this project because I always respected the fire department, and that's something I think is cool for firefighters to use fire hydrants if there's any fires nearby.
I think it's amazing that such young people come together and that they want to give back to their community. As I take the back of my screwdriver, and I tap my edges.
I feel proud of myself. I feel happy that I get to make a difference in my community, make people around me better, feel safer, just in case anything happens. And I hope to inspire other people around me to help the community.
Now, here's some extra knowledge for you. Ever wonder why fire hydrants are painted different colors? In Irving, it relates to the size of the water main it's attached to, so you learned something new today. Now, here's a quick look at some other news from Irving.
We have been telling you about how Red Bull is bringing Flugtag back to Irving after this massively successful event in 2013, and this year's festivities are just about upon us. Saturday, September 13th is the date, and it kicks off with the Red Bull Air Force Skydive at 11:45. At noon, the Flugtag competition begins, and the event wraps up at 4:00, all at Levy Event Plaza in Irving. Among a big field of competitors, we know there will be at least three Irving teams to cheer from. One represents Irving-based 7-Eleven, then there are a couple of amateur teams taking part. While admission is free, there are also a limited number of $75 flight club tickets that guarantee seating and shade. Again, Red Bull Flugtag is on September 13th. Here is something else for entertainment. Movies on Main provides a chance to watch family-friendly flicks on the big screen in Heritage Park. on the big screen in Heritage Park each Friday in September. It kicks off on September 5th with Moana 2, and you can see some of the other titles coming up. Each movie starts at 7:30 PM. Food vendors will be on site. Registration is open now for the 32nd Annual Trash Bash. It's on Saturday, September 27th from 9:00 AM to noon at T W Richardson Grove Park. As you see in this video from past years, it's a cleanup of the Campion Trail along the Trinity River. Attendees also have the chance to take in some exhibits and enjoy lunch afterward. Find the link to register at keepirvingbeautiful.org.
ICTN just picked up 25 national awards at a conference here in New Orleans that also included a lot of education. Here's a quick wrap-up.
The awards recognized a variety of ICTN's shows, stories, and other video projects. The recognition came during the annual conference of NTOA, the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors. We attended a lot of different sessions, including one presented by a travel influencer who shared how she gets the perfect shot on her global adventures. Very interesting to hear from her. And of course, one of the most valuable parts of this experience is networking and sharing ideas with our peers in other cities, all while we take in the scene in New Orleans.
Life ain't easy for a boy named Zoo.
Welcome to ICTN's Pets of the Week. So much to talk about with Egan Dobson from Irving Animal Services. And let's start with, you've heard of a boy named Zoo. This is a boy named?
Lilo.
Lilo. And Lilo is a special needs dog. Lilo is deaf. So what are the considerations for adopting a deaf dog?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, number one, he can't hear you, unfortunately. So a lot of the training is gonna be more along the lines of him having to look at you, look at your hands. Luckily, Lilo here, he's very treat motivated. He's very toy motivated. So he already has sit. He has like come down as long as he's looking. Lilo is very dog friendly, so he does like to play. But it would have to be with a dog who kind of understands that he can't hear. So maybe give him a little bit more patience.
And Lilo is so much fun just in the time that we've been here.
He's an absolute goofball. I mean, only five months old. He's got some room to grow, got some things to learn. But he keeps a smile on your face for sure.
And if you want to change the name?
Oh, doesn't matter. He can't hear you.
So this has been such a busy month for you. First, you had the mega adoption event. How did that go?
It went so well. We took about 40 dogs and puppies and ended up adopting out 39 dogs. And most of them being actually our large dogs and more of our extended stays.
And then Clear the Shelters Month is wrapping up. Oh, Lilo. Excited about Clear the Shelters Month? How big that you'll go home. So tell me how Clear the Shelters went.
Yeah, Clear the Shelters was great. We ended up doing more adoptions this year than last, resulting, oh, hello. Resulting in 46 adoptions.
Just on the Clear the Shelter Day alone?
Just on Clear the Shelter Day alone. And for this entire month, we're looking at 160 and still continuing.
But it's also important to mention that even though you've had all of these adoptions, new animals are coming in all the time. So there's still a selection here.
Absolutely. I mean, obviously, we always need help in our large dog area as that's the first place to really get full first. But we do see more of our smaller dogs, more puppies coming in. So if anybody's still looking to add a pet to their family, they can just stop on by.
Let's update our dog from last time. Mallory. I don't understand why Mallory has not gotten adopted.
Yeah, Mallory just gets really overlooked in her kennel. She's a little bit more noisy. She's jumping up at the bars. She's just really excited to see somebody. Outside of the kennel, like Mallory's already a staff favorite. She's very quiet. She's potty trained. She's kennel trained. Like she has such an amazing list. She just gets overlooked while she's with us.
And you have a positive update on Soul.
Oh, she got adopted at the mega adoption event. Her owner's super sweet and it sounds like she actually already has a doggy friend in the home.
And a viewer favorite, Miss Meatloaf. You are here at some positive reports.
Yes, so she went to a foster to adopt and she has since been adopted.
Right, a lot of love.
Lots of love.
With Miss Meatloaf. And we definitely want to thank you, our viewers, for watching and sharing these segments because we've had so many positive outcomes the last few months, getting pets like Miss Meatloaf adopted and so many others. And now let's find Lilo a home. So much energy and love to bring to your household. Egan, thanks so much.
No, thank you.
And you can visit the Animal Care Campus at 4140 Valley View Lane. Check out the websites you see on the screen for the latest operating hours and to see more adoptable animals. And now here's a preview of what's coming up on the next City Source.
See the improvements now complete on the Lake Carolyn Promenade in Las Colinas and find out what it means for residents of the area as well as visitors to this Irving attraction. Plus, city leaders turn out to celebrate the extension of Conflans Road. Those stories and much more next time on City Source. Here's how to connect with us. You can email us at ictn@irvingtx.gov. Our YouTube channel is youtube.com/thecityofirving. We hope you will subscribe and hit that like button on the videos you watch. And we always appreciate it when you leave us some positive comments. And you can look for updates on events and initiatives across the major social media platforms at the City of Irving.
And that's it for this special edition of City Source from New Orleans. Thanks for watching. Stay safe and we'll see you next time.
Most children are back in school, but they may not have all they need to get through the year. The Backpack to School Drive continues here at the South Irving Library. Help Irving kids feel cared for and confident by donating a new or gently-used backpack or lunchbox through the end of August. Beat the heat at Irving's outdoor pools through Labor Day. For the rest of August, you can still enjoy a dip in one of Irving's pools on weekends from 1:00 to 7:00 PM. And before they close for the season, the pools at Simran, Lee, and here at West Irving Aquatic Center will be open on September 1st from 1:00 to 6:00 PM. Who doesn't like free? Thanks to a community sponsor, we can all visit the Irving Archives and Museum through September with no admission fee. And on September 7th, you can also enjoy a free dozen-led tour of the permanent gallery and learn all about Irving history.
A hot summer evening turns into a cool country concert that keeps the beat alive at Heritage Park.
Well, it's great to be with you all today. Thank you all for coming out. We built this park for the people that live here in the city and the people that want to come visit.
995 The Wolf teamed up with the City of Irving to host the Texas Tahoe Summer Finale Party, featuring country artist Shane Prophet.
I'm gonna have something for everybody and it's gonna be a fun time.
And headliner, American Idol winner Scotty McCreery.
We always love coming out here to Texas. Good to be here in Irving. I feel like a lot of times we get to go all over and it's all about us, but tonight's about the community. And to me, that's a cool thing.
It's another complimentary free event that we're doing. But on top of that, just a great way to promote this very diverse community that we have and a place to come and have it at.
Along with the concert, this event includes an exciting Tahoe giveaway.
We are giving away a beautiful Z71.
Chevy Tahoe.
From Clay Cooley.
Almost 200,000 people registered to win. And after narrowing it down, 50 of them are randomly given a key that will potentially unlock their special prize.
Whoever opens that lock opens up the chains, gets the fob, and they own the all-new Chevy Tahoe from Clay Cooley Auto Group.
And then they pass out on the stage because they're so excited.
Look at the bright side, you're off work.
Lucky number 33, Vicki Hale, mom of three, won the keys to the brand-new car.
And 995 The Wolf and New Country 963, hit that thing.
Vicki, what are your thoughts right now?
Oh, my God. You just don't even know. It's gonna change my life tremendously. I went through a divorce and I need a truck, trailer and things like that. And I can't do it in my Malibu. Been telling her I want to get a truck so we can haul stuff. I don't need that anymore.
I'm her best friend. There's no one better than her that deserves this. She raised her kids all alone and has never had anything this nice.
I do now, though.
Yeah, she's got it now.
Following Vicki's life-changing win, the community enjoys listening and dancing to some of Shane and Scotty's hit music.
We'll be playing some of those old songs. We'll be playing some brand-new stuff. New song out right now with Hootie and the Blowfish called Bottle Rockets. That's some of the most fun I've ever had with music we've made.
I like to think my music is kind of a form of therapy and an escape for everybody.
The crowd gets to come out and kind of forget about the real world for just, you know, 90 minutes. Come out, have fun, bring the family, bring the friends and just enjoy not a country music with us.
Irving Parks and Rec is spreading the message that the Center Park Recreation Center will be closed from September 1st to October 15th. The announcement comes as construction progresses on the new indoor aquatic center there. During the weeks that center will be closed, crews will be doing utility and concrete work that cannot be done while people are inside the existing building. So during this time, most activities will be relocated to the Georgia Pharoah Rec Center. And the after-school program will be based at the Center East Building. While this closure only lasts until mid-October, additional work will continue. All of the construction on the Center Park Aquatic and Recreation Center, or Spark, is expected to be complete by Memorial Day weekend of next year. See more about Irving's initiative to elevate aquatics and recreation at irvingtx.gov/playirving.
Anyone who does fiber arts comes to us.
We got the Sewing and Quilt Expo here in Irving. This is my third year, so this is wonderful. It's something new each year.
We have classes, we have shows, we have lectures, we have talks.
We're good to see and showcase all of our great products, entertain with what we can do with our demos. Also, one of the best parts is upstairs are classes.
Many of our classes are focused on quilting, piecing techniques, and history of quilts. But then we also have the sewing aspect of it, which is fashion sewing. So you saw with Joe Vecarelli teaching how to drape a jacket on your body double. You sit there and go, well, how do I know what my fit is? But that's a really good question. That's the most difficult question in the home consumer market is getting that right fit.
We have a booth called Sewing for a Cause. And there's two of our booths that we're doing with vendors.
We are doing pillowcases for Ryan's Smiles for Cancer. And we're also doing the veteran squares. It's called the rail fence.
Oh, our veterans really need this and they really love it when they are given a quilt.
You think it's maybe just a blanket or something that you see as a... It is not. It is pure artwork. You're cutting stuff down just to put it all back together in a different way.
You can look online and be on Pinterest and Instagram and get an idea for what people are doing. But actually getting to be here and see it in person, you get to see the new waves, the new ideas that are coming in. And that's what I really look forward to. There's a saying that my soul is fed with needle and thread. And for me, that's very true. That's what makes it special. It's a way to get what's in our minds and in our hearts out into the world.
It's the Community Holiday Home Decor Swap. Through August, bring gently-used decorations for any holiday here to the South Irving Library. Then on September 27th, stop by the library and discover decor to take home to add fresh flair to upcoming holiday displays. Bring your blankets and lawn chairs on Fridays in September for a family-friendly movie under the stars here at Heritage Park. Grab a bite to eat in the Irving Heritage District or from an onsite food vendor. Up first on September 5th, it's Moana 2. That's Movies on Main, Fridays in September at 7:30 PM. Any visit to the Irving Archives and Museum should include a stop here at the Museum Store. It's your go-to place for one-of-a-kind gifts and treasures such as this Irving Texas t-shirt and this cute and cuddly Mustang. The Irving Archives and Museum Store features handmade products from local artisans and other unique products.
Are you or someone you know interested in sharing your concerns? Well, good news. The City of Irving has just made it easier than ever for you to report those concerns thanks to the new Irving TX Gov app. Just grab your phone and head to the App Store or Google Play, search Irving TX Gov and download the app. Then create an account with your name, email, and password. From there, it's as simple as tapping "Report a Concern" and entering your non-emergency issue. Again, non-emergency issue. Select the type of concern and add any important details, like the location or relevant photos you've taken. If you'd like to be notified of the city's response, go into Account Details and set up Notification Preferences. And while you're on the app, be sure to check out the latest news and upcoming events right here in Irving. At home or on the go, the Irving TX Gov app keeps you in the know and engaged with your city. So download the app today.
We are on location in New Orleans for a special edition of City Source. The reasons why we're here coming up. Also, the news from Irving, including this.
Tall task. Irving firefighters are in training focusing on Irving's high-rises.
High-rise is very high-risk.
They can be very taxing on the individual and the firefighter and crews.
See why this training is especially relevant right now. Chef Challenge.
I like to go on a flavor adventure.
Chefs from across the country converge in Irving. See them in action as they work against the clock for honors. Plus, how a student pursuing a goal is helping the city. And results from the animal adoption event called Clear the Shelters, now on City Source.
Hello and welcome to City Source. I'm Thomas Gandy in New Orleans, Louisiana. A couple of us from the ICTN team are here for the annual conference of NTOA, National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors. Of course, that means a lot of talk here about how cities use video. Also, an award ceremony. More from that at the end of today's show. But let's start with the news from Irving. Several fire departments from across the DFW region are taking part in special training to keep high-rise buildings safe. And we caught all of the action.
Refining their response and making sure they're ready.
You need to flow this water to get your pressure set.
Irving firefighters are practicing their response to fires in high-rise buildings.
You just end up putting this on the actual stem and you're able to adjust it.
And they are teaming up with neighboring departments.
You need to be able to just have it be second nature.
Irving has a lot of high-rises, including the Sheraton DFW where this exercise is taking place. Many are older buildings. Some are newer. All present challenges. But the response typically begins in the same place.
This is the fire control room. This is what we call the brains of the building. Whenever we come in off the rigs, we're gonna come in here and check what floors are on fire.
Biggest concern and our biggest challenge with the high-rise fires, how do we get our people to whatever floor the fire is on? Most of our fires we go to are on the first or second floor of a two-story house or a one-story house. So that's fairly easy to do. But our biggest challenge here is how do we get 40 or 50 firefighters up to, say, the 20th floor?
There's a box of these in the fire control room. Grab one right now. If I plug into here, goose should pick up. But if you're to let go.
So elevator operations are a priority, but depending on the emergency, they may not work.
Ooh, that's what I wouldn't trust it. Right. And that's why we want to leave somebody in here.
In this situation, once you have capture, you would literally just start carrying or dragging until you've captured the load and then you would start the port entry technique, okay?
In this scenario, crews are practicing how they would get an injured firefighter out of the building.
Just go around it.
Go around it. But before you get to the next one, call lower slope and push through the first time.
Most stairwells, you know, they're designed to be closed in, so a lot of times you can segregate yourself from the fire, seclude yourself from the rest of the building to smoke the fire, and then lower either the patient or a firefighter down that stairwell.
Even though you may not have a whole lot on you, you can still do a lot with the little bit that you have.
While all of that action is happening, this is command where chiefs are talking strategy and resources, really looking at the big picture, which is especially important when multiple agencies are involved.
If we did have this building right here on fire, we'd rely on Capel, Grand Prairie, Grapevine, DFW, we'd rely on those other cities to help us out. We're trying to get everybody on the same page.
We want to open this all the way and then control everything from right here.
It all takes practice. These exercises are designed to go at a slower pace so participants can ask questions and take in all of the knowledge.
We want to make our mistakes in training. We say we want to do it so often that we can't do it wrong. We don't just do it till we get it right. We do it till we can't get it wrong.
It all comes down to being ready when it counts the most.
We all put our lives on the line to save one citizen and, you know, we are training doing this is ultimately to serve the citizens of Irving.
See more from the Irving Fire Department on our special playlist at youtube.com/thecityofirving. The animal adoption event called Clear the Shelters is wrapping up its successful 11th year. Our team stopped by the animal care campus in Irving on Clear the Shelters Day when all adoptions were free. Other attractions included free pet identification tags. We saw a lot of people looking for a loving addition to their home.
I have a five-year-old granddaughter, grandson, they're twins. They're five years old, just started school, so they have a puppy at the house. When they come spend the weekends with me, give them something else to play with.
We got a little kitten. Her name is Anne, but I think we're changing the name to Bella. Bella. I don't know, I've always been a cat person. This is his first cat. Ready to go.
We did great. We did better than last year. We had a total of 46 adoptions on Clear the Shelter Day and for the whole month, we're about 160.
I think it's good for the community because these pets deserve a second change.
It was kind of crazy to an extent with how many eyes we had on this event, which is great. Definitely getting that message across to adopt, to foster, to volunteer, to donate is very helpful across the board.
Clear the Shelter started in Irving, then spread nationwide through a partnership with NBC. Keep in mind, there are still pets available at the animal care campus. We will showcase one during our Pet of the Week segment. New Orleans, of course, is known for its food and the visitor industry overall. It's a big part of the economy here as it is back home in Irving. Robert Sheik covered an event that brought attention to a hotel chain and the culinary scene. He's here with me at the Crescent City to tell us all about it. Hi, Robert.
Thanks, Thomas. Yeah, Marriott International has properties all across Irving and the entire globe. One way the company brings all those hotel employees together is through a fun competition called Masters of the Craft. Some sizzle, some shake, perhaps this with the steak.
Much mistake, they go well together.
30 minutes! Spontaneous culinary creativity is at its peak for chefs like Miguel Cantero during this one-of-a-kind event.
Beef sauce with bourbon and pepper. It went from one thing to another.
Nearly 40 chefs and bartenders from across the country gathered at the Weston Irving Convention Center at Las Colinas. For the Bay Area and Mid-America Regional Championship, Marriott Hotels' Masters of the Craft Competition. Washing them under pressure and all of the components and all of the flavors they're pulling in, it's just inspiring.
Every chef from every round is using completely different techniques.
Local restaurateur David Cole served as the emcee and was astonished at this collection of talent.
Oh, man, it just blew me away.
This regional championship featured winners of local competitions for employees at Marriott Hotel properties.